I have the call to order the meeting for the City Council for the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for June 22nd, 2020. We, if you would please stand as you are able, the flag will be here and we will pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Will the clerk please call the role of the members?
Denise Hoppe.
Present.
Judy Hutchinson.
I'm getting there.
Here.
Zachary Urban.
Present.
Rachel Holtein. Amanda Weaver.
Here.
Corey Stites.
Present.
Leah Dozeman.
Here.
Valerie Nasserbeck.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, we have all eight members of council present. We have a quorum.
Thank you so much. We have a, I'm pleased that we have a proclamation for Parks and Recreation Month on July 20th, July 2020, and I'm very pleased to have Diane Namiats, the Commission Chair for the Parks and Recreation Commission. This is Namiats, thank you for joining us. So, a proclamation. Whereas parks and recreation are important to maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all residents, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community. And whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also contribute to the mental and emotional health of all community members. And whereas parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. And whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the City of Wheat Ridge recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources. Now therefore, I Bud Starker, Mayor, and the City and the Wheat Ridge City Council do hereby declare July 2020 as Parks and Recreation Month in the City of Wheat Ridge. Thank you. And Mr. Namiats, I'd like to turn it over to you if you have some remarks for us.
Just, you know, this pandemic time for us has been an amazing reminder of how important our parks are or have been to our city. Not only are people moving here because of our parks, but they are busting down the walls and the police lines to get into our parks. At no time has this outdoor space been more important to us as a place of gathering, of relaxing, and just, you know, this appreciation for what our town is. So, thank you for the proclamation and we will share that with everybody. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you very much and thank you to the work that your commission does to make our parks great parks. We have some of the best, I think, in the state. So, thank you very much.
Thanks.
We are at approval of the minutes. Counselors, in your package, you have study session notes for the meeting on June 1st, 2020, and June 15th, 2020, and special city council meetings for the, for the date of June 1st, 2020, and city council minutes of June 8th, 2020. Without exception, the minutes would stand approved. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Ms. Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. June 8th, City Council Minutes, I was looking under City Manager Matters and the Part-Time Homeless Navigator Position, it states in the minutes that it would be possibly divided between Golden and Arvada and us. It's, wasn't it Golden, Edgewater and us?
That, that is my recollection unless Mr. Golf?
Yep, that is correct. Good catch.
Okay. Good catch on that. Any other corrections to the minutes? All right, we will pass those on to Mr. Kirkpatrick. If you would make those corrections, then we will publish the minutes. We have a change in, in the status on item number two, and without objection, I would ask council to consider this item first on the agenda. Okay, thank you. We are now at citizens' right to speak. Citizens may speak on any matter not on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes. The mayor pro tem will be our timekeeper. Citizens who wish to speak on an, on a public hearing item or a decision, resolution, or motion, may speak when that item comes up on the agenda at the conclusion of the staff report for that specific agenda item. You may also raise your hand in the Zoom virtual format at any time we're having public comment. The public microphones, public's microphones have been unmuted now. If you are not speaking, please mute your own telephone to decrease background noise. I will invite members of the public to speak based on the first letter of your last name. When I come to your position in the alphabet, please speak up and I will recognize you. When I recognize you to speak, please clearly state your first name and your last name, and please spell your last name and give your street address for the record. We will also, we also have the opportunity to speak in person at the, at the podium at City Council. And now we were, began our citizens' right to speak. I want to ask, is there any citizens wishing to speak under citizens' right to speak who are at the podium? You're muted. Ms. Shek, you've got your mute button on.
I'm so sorry, just getting used to this. No, Mayor, there's no one here for citizens' right to speak.
Thank you very much. Then we will go through our alphabet. Is there anyone wishing to speak whose last name begins with the letters A through E? Please speak up and I will recognize you to speak. A through E. Is there anyone wishing to speak whose last name begins with the letters F through J? Speak up and I will recognize you.
Hello?
Yes, the speaker who just spoke, please give us your name and you may proceed.
This is Ihor Figlus, F-I-G-L-U-S, and I live at 9775 West 36th Avenue. And I would just like to write a little comment to my experience posting on Wheat Ridge Speaks, which is, today was the first time that I, I posted a written comment. And one of the things I discovered is that there's a, I think, a pretty severe limitation on the input that citizens can provide. I wanted to upload several pictures to support my statements and found that I could only upload a single picture and not others. Now, I got around this by then creating several empty posts where I attached those pictures, but it brought up a situation where like, for example, when there's a, a public hearing on a zoning issue, the developer or the applicant, I should say, not the developer, the applicant can provide a PowerPoint presentation. That's not one of the files that's available for upload from citizen. The other thing, for example, is also that the Community Planning Department essentially runs through a full presentation of the plan of the applicant. And they do that through video and, but they do not, you know, de facto, they're representing the applicant, but they don't provide the same opportunity for representation to a citizen that might want to put together a multimedia presentation. You know, maybe, maybe those resources are available, but they're certainly not publicized. So, I would just like to bring that to the attention of council. I would like, I would ask the council to expand the opportunities for citizens to provide input during, as part of the Wheat Ridge Speaks so that everybody can be on an equal footing. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I have Mr. and Mrs. Dwyers, I see that your hand is up on the Zoom format. If you would like to unmute yourself, you may have the floor this time.
Sure, yeah, thank you. We would just like to
May I ask you to introduce yourself, please?
My name is Brian Dwyer. Last name is spelled D-W-Y-E-R, and I'm here with my wife, Alana. And I don't believe that we're alone in filing this complaint, if you want to call it that, but there's been night after night fireworks being set off and we've called the Jeffco Police Department a number of times and they don't go on for very long, but it's just been very disruptive. And maybe it sounds petty, but our dog gets extremely upset by it and it's, if it was just happening once or twice, it would be one thing, but it, it's happening on a very consistent basis. And I know that there's others in the Wheat Ridge Neighbors Facebook group that are expressing the same frustration. So, I just want to say that, that it's been a, is, at the very least, it's, it's been a major nuisance. So, thank you for the floor and I just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you very much for, for your comment on that tonight. Is there anyone wishing to speak whose last name begins with the letter F through J? Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak whose last name begins with the letter K through O? K through O? Anyone wishing to speak? Yes.
Yes, I would like to speak.
Yes, ma'am. If you would, please give us your name and address and you may have, you may speak.
Yes, my name is Arianna Marazovich, 3651 Ward Road, Wheat Ridge. Section 510 of the Wheat Ridge Charter states at least 15 days' notice of the time and place of hearing and the address and legal description of the property shall be published in an official paper or paper of general circulation within the city, and notice of the hearing shall be posted on the property so that it is easily visible to neighboring property owners. Said notices shall contain the statement that specific plans for the proposed changes are available for inspection at the Wheat Ridge City Hall. The property at Clear Creek Crossing was not properly noticed and so the public hearing should not be opened tonight.
Ma'am, ma'am, if this, if this concern, if this concerns Agenda Item Number One, we will take up that when Agenda Item comes up on the, on the agenda.
And I will speak to that also at that time. May I continue?
Not if you're going to speak about Agenda Item Number One. If you have something else, you may speak.
Well, then I guess you've effectively cut me off. Thank you.
Well, we look forward to having you on Agenda Item Number One.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to speak whose last name begins with the letter K through O? Is there anyone wishing to speak whose last name begins with the letter P through T? Is there anyone wishing to speak whose last name begins with the letter U through Z? We've been through the alphabet. Is there anyone else wishing to speak under public comment, items not on the agenda, who has not spoken tonight, who would like to speak now during citizens' right to speak?
Mr. Mayor, I see two hands raised on the Zoom attendees.
Okay, thank you so much. Let's see, is this? Okay, I guess, do you have a, a name to go with those? I don't see the hand raised function in my screen, so.
Yes, I see Gene Tomes and, and Jeff Contreras, Jerry DeTulio.
Okay, Mr. and Mrs. Combs, I would recognize you to speak.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. This is Gene Tomes, T-O-M-E-S, J-A-N is the name, my first name, Gene.
Thank you. Please give us your address.
Okay, it's 4065 J Street, 80033.
Thanks so much. Please continue.
I sent a comment in earlier and I'd just like to read that comment so that I'm on point if I could, if I may.
Yes, ma'am.
This is pertaining to the use of illegal fireworks, including the professional motor, mortar-sized, cannon-sized fireworks in Wheat Ridge. They have grown, the use of these fireworks has grown exponentially over the last few months. There are explosions in my immediate neighborhood occurring all hours on a daily basis for approximately three to four months. On June 15th, this is one incident I'm going to refer to. On June 15th, the police responded to several neighbors' calls of complaint for the use of mortar-sized fireworks, including myself. The police witnessed the use of illegal fireworks by young children at the address given to them in our complaint. There were also several intoxicated adults present at that address. The police did not issue any citation to any of the adults at the home the next night, as well as several nights since, the residents at the complaint address have continued to use illegal fireworks. This is not, this is not a derogatory statement to our police. I know that they are under a lot of scrutiny right now and they have their hands full. But if our police department is not going to enforce the illegal fireworks laws or city noise ordinances, these nightly explosions will continue to go unchecked. These nightly explosions are making Wheat Ridge an unpleasant, unhealthy, and dangerous place to live. They are degrading the peace and are creating a great risk of fire danger and property damage for homeowners. I would like to know, is the City of Wheat Ridge waiting until a child is killed or injured in an explosion or a neighbor's home is set on fire, risking the lives of the people living within until some real action is taken to stop these incidents from happening? I have a proposal to increase the fine for the use of dangerous motor-sized fireworks in the City of Wheat Ridge to $5,000. I further propose that any adult found authorizing and giving a child any inciderate device and explosive be issued a citation for the same amount and required to attend child endangerment training with zero tolerance. These few residents are being allowed to create hazardous and mentally damaging living conditions for the majority of the residents of Wheat Ridge. Thank you so much for allowing me to comment.
Thank you very much for bringing that to us tonight. Ms. Shek, do we have additional hands raised?
We do, Mayor. We have Jerry DeTulio.
Mr. DeTulio, please proceed.
Hi, this is Jerry DeTulio. Can you hear me now? Okay, I just want a couple of quick things. I wanted to thank the City Council for all of the new ways of communicating with the public. I think that based on COVID and now that we have Zoom and other different types of methods of communication, that somebody complaining about that they're not getting enough information from the city and from the city council is actually incorrect. I think that generally speaking, with all of the different Zooms, information that's being distributed out by city council and staff, I think it's actually really good. It's actually better than it's ever been in the past. I've been able to watch these meetings and we have to remember that when somebody files an application for a land use, that's their application and the public is notified, but really the city is working on their application. And that they're the ones that are available to work on it. So, I think constantly delaying some of these projects is really not necessary because there's more information out there now than ever. Whether you're a senior or a young person, you have access to a lot of different media. And then the other thing I wanted to ask the council about is there's still some business owners who've been really busy with COVID and trying to keep their businesses alive. And I still think some of them, I haven't actually had the opportunity to file for the Carrots Funds. One of them is a business owner in District 2. So, I'm hoping that you can actually potentially open it up one more time so these business owners can apply. This business owner indicated that he did apply, but that somehow the, the application was never reached City Hall. And this was the first time he applied. He didn't apply for, or for the first round. I think that the money is not the city money, it's actually taxpayer money. And I think as many ways as possible to get that money out to the business owner can be done. I was hoping that you could maybe open it up one more time or contact this, this business owner. I had sent an email to Patrick over the weekend and Zach Urban, Councilmember Urban. So, hopefully that leads this application to get in the mix and maybe get some others out there. I'm willing to help any way I can by also getting the word out. So, thanks for all you're doing. I appreciate the, the open transparency of the City of Wheat Ridge government, and I think that you're doing a great job. And hang in there, I know it's not fun sometimes.
Thank you, Mr. DeTulio. And just for the record, would you please give us your first name and last name and spell your last name and give us, give us your address?
Oh, it's Jerry DeTulio, D-I-T-U-L-L-I-O, 3250 Newland Street, Wheat Ridge.
Thank you very much, Mr. DeTulio, for joining us tonight.
Thanks. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Ms. Shek, are there any other hands raised?
Hello? Hello? Yes, my name is Odarka Figlus and it's F as in Frank, I-G-L-U-S. And my address is 10580 West 34th Avenue in Wheat Ridge.
Thank you.
And I noticed that City Council acknowledged problems with going door-to-door and collecting signatures when you passed a resolution changing the requirements for liquor licenses. And I think that's a wise thing that you did, but I think it's also very concerning that there's been no progress and no changes made to the way that we collect signatures for a referendum, especially as you're continuing now towards holding public hearings. And, you know, as you know, and as I understand it, we are governed by state law and state rules only to the extent that we don't have rules of our own. So, there's nothing that keeps the city from coming up with its own rules on any aspect of gathering signatures for the referendum. It's just because if, apparently if we don't have our own rules, then it defaults to the state. And so, there's been a lot of time for the city to address this issue and yet there's, and there's been, you council members have actually spoken very eloquently about how the whole ordinance process is a continuum. It just doesn't start and end with the public hearing and the vote of the council. It has to continue on with the right of the citizens to then petition. And so, I still think that you should not, this is my opinion, is that really, to be fair, you should not be holding public hearings until you've made some of those changes and at least had an open public discussion of those changes and come up with some accommodations. And I understand that the state or the city or somebody's saying that it's considered to be an essential public service or public, an essential function to be able to go out and that we can't be prevented from going door-to-door to get people's signatures. What we're talking about here is that, you know, one thing you can't prevent us, but we're talking about issues of safety. I mean, if you look, City Council's still not meeting at City Hall because of issues of safety. And you really haven't addressed the city's safety issues. You haven't given us guidelines that would be maybe approved by Dr. Johnson, and you haven't made any changes in the way that we collect the signatures. And I just find that very concerning that the city has had time to develop new regulations for a very small subset and versus, you know, if we have to go out to referendum, we have to get at least 2,000 signatures. That means many people signing the same piece of paper. It means a lot of contact with a lot of people because 2,000 signatures doesn't mean that you only speak with 2,000 people in this last referendum.
Mrs. Figlus, your, your time has expired. Thank you so much for your comments tonight.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Shek, are there any hands raised in the Zoom feature?
Mayor, I don't see anyone. I don't see anyone with their hands raised. There is another caller and I'm not sure if they'd like to speak.
Okay, I will, is there anyone else in the public who has not spoken tonight who would like to speak during citizens' right to speak? Now is your opportunity. If you would speak up, I will recognize you. Okay, I don't hear anyone else desiring to speak under citizens' right to speak, so we are going to close that, the portion of our, our agenda and move to our next item. And we are going to consider item number two as the, as the first item on our agenda. Ms. Weaver, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Council Bill Number 11-2020, An Ordinance Approving the Rezoning of a Property Located at 9800 West 38th Avenue from Residential 1, R1, to Plan Residential Development, or PRD, with an Outline Development Plan, or an ODP. This is case number WZ1907/HEARDY.
Would you read, please, the, the issue in this case?
I will. Sorry about that. I lost it on my screen for a moment. The applicant, the issue is, is the applicant is requesting approval of a zone change from Residential 1 to Plan Residential Development with an Outline Development Plan for the property located at 1900 West 38th Avenue, the southeast corner of West 38th Avenue and Johnson Street. The purpose of this request is to prepare the property for the development of four single-family homes and three duplexes for a total of 10 dwelling units. The prior action is that the Planning Commission heard the request at the public hearing on February 6th, 2020, and recommended approval. The staff report and meeting minutes from the planning are enclosed.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. This is an ordinance on second reading. It is quasi-judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing. And Mr. Golf, do we have a staff report on this item?
We will. On this item, this evening, we'll turn it over to City Attorney Jerry, Jerry Doll. We did receive a legal protest on this today, so he will speak to that process.
Mr. Doll, please.
Thank you. That's correct. Council can hear me, right?
Yes, sir.
Good, thank you. Yes, that's correct. We received a, a legal protest on this rezoning. The community development staff has reviewed that protest as they're required to do. And pursuant to the ordinance that you adopted last September, when a legal protest is received prior to the commencement of the hearing, the hearing is then automatically continued to the next regular meeting of the City Council. That's July the 13th at 7:00 PM. It would be a virtual hearing. And so, the, the next action is really just the mayor declaring that that hearing is continued to that date, time, and format.
Thank you very much. We do have a legal protest on this item, number two. I'm going to stipulate that we have continued that hearing until a public hearing is held at 7:00 PM on July 13th, 2020, as a virtual meeting. Thank you. We will go now to Agenda Item Number One. Mr. Stites, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Dozeman has a question, though.
Thank you, Councilmember Stites. I just had a quick question for Mr. Doll as far as the public notification process when a meeting is, or a public hearing is continued. Can you clarify maybe if another notice needs to be posted on the property in the paper and so on?
Yes, the, the code section that you adopted last September requires that once a meeting is continued, then there is additional notice and the staff will proceed to provide for that notice posted, et cetera.
Thank you. Okay, we will proceed with item number one. Mr. Stites, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I should probably have this memorized by now, but Council Bill Number 10-2020, An Ordinance Approving an Amendment to the Existing Plan Mixed Use Development, PMUD, zoning to increase the allowable height for hospital uses at Clear Creek Crossing, Case Number WZ-19-10. At issue, the applicant is requesting to modify the underlying zoning At issue, the applicant is requesting to modify the underlying zoning to increase the allowable height for hospital use. Uses at, a hospital is already permitted use in the existing zoning, and the existing zoning also contemplated six-story employment uses. However, a hospital built to six stories requires an additional twelve feet of height to meet design requirements and current building codes. The applicant is also seeking a limited additional height allowance to accommodate a rooftop elevator associated with a helipad. This hearing was opened but automatically continued to June eighth due to receipt of legal protest. I think that.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. It has been opened previous to this. It is an ordinance on second reading for ordinance number sixteen ninety. It is quasi-judicial. If you, I am going to administer an oath, and because we're in a virtual format, if you intend to testify on this hearing, by virtue of testifying on this hearing, you will affirm that you will tell the truth as you understand it in this matter. Thank you. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We do. Our Planning Manager, Lauren Mikulak.
Ms. Mikulak, please proceed.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen now and begin my presentation. My name is Lauren Mikulak, and I'm a planner with the City of Wheat Ridge Community Development Department. I'm presenting this case number WZ nineteen ten. I would like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file, the zoning ordinance, the comprehensive plan, this digital presentation, and all comments received to date and through Wheat Ridge Speaks. This property is within the City of Wheat Ridge. All notification and posting requirements have been met, and City Council does have jurisdiction to hear this case. We'll start with an aerial. This image is from twenty eighteen, and the subject site is outlined here in red. It's located west of I seventy, south of Highway fifty-eight and Clear Creek, and north of Thirty-Second Avenue. The property is known as Clear Creek Crossing and is about a hundred and ten acres in size. If you've looked at the site from the interstate lately, you have seen activity. In twenty nineteen, Denver Water completed work on a new water line that traverses the site. The master developer has been working on infrastructure, including construction of Fortieth Avenue, Clear Creek Drive, and the new I seventy hook ramps, and vertical construction has begun. This image is an excerpt from the zoning map. That bright blue color represents the PMUD zoning designation or Planned Mixed Use Development. The surrounding zoning shown in gray represents Planned Commercial Development, PCD, custom zoning for those respective commercial properties. The hatched area beyond the city's boundary to the west is unincorporated Jefferson County. This includes a residential neighborhood to the southwest. And on the east side of I seventy and the site are commercial and industrial developments, including the Applewood Village Shopping Center to the southeast and this yellow area, which is a residential neighborhood beyond. Plan developments are customized, property-specific zoning documents, and involve a two-step process. In this case, the first step was approval of the PMUD Planned Mixed Use Development zoning in twenty eighteen. That approval included two regulatory documents, the outline development plan and the design pattern book. These two documents establish the allowed uses and development standards for the property and establish access configurations. The second step is approval of a specific development plan for each building, lot, or phase. These focus on specific details, including architecture, site design, and landscaping. For Clear Creek Crossing, two SDPs have now been approved and several are under staff review. The approved zoning organizes the site into eight planning areas. Each planning area allows a different mix of uses and has different development standards. In general, the zoning calls for a mix of land uses at a variety of scales, including multifamily residential, retail, restaurant, entertainment, and employment uses. The focus of this application is strictly on Planning Area One, shown here in orange. There is no change proposed to the other planning areas. PA One is owned by SCL Health, the same entity that operates the Lutheran Medical Campus in the middle of Wheat Ridge on Thirty-Eighth Avenue, just west of Wadsworth. SCL Health purchased the PA One property in twenty eighteen. A hospital use is specifically listed in the outline development plan and is a permitted use under the current zoning. As the applicant has started working on conceptual plans, they have refined their vision and needs for the site and determined that additional height allowance is necessary. In Planning Area One, maximum height depends on the use, and four categories are established. This table is taken from the current zoning. In PA One, single-purpose commercial uses are limited to sixty-two feet in height. Residential uses are limited to sixty-five feet. And primary employment and vertical mixed use are limited to ninety feet. A ninety-foot height maximum generally corresponds to a six-story building. However, the building codes and functional, functional needs of a hospital require additional height to achieve a six-story structure. For example, the ceiling height in an operating room is generally taller than the ceiling height in an office building. And this is the reason for the zoning amendment. This request to allow additional height would be accomplished in the most limiting way possible by adding two specific categories to this PA One height chart. First would allow the hospital building to be a maximum of a hundred and two feet, which would accommodate a six-story structure. The second category would accommodate an elevator and vestibule accessory to a rooftop helipad. This is limited in size to twenty-five hundred square feet, a small portion of the overall rooftop. Again, these are permitted uses under the current zoning, and there's no change to the use chart or to any other development standard in the project. This image is an excerpt from the Design Pattern Book. The end result of this request is that those two categories would be added to this table, shown here in red. In a planned development, for any change to a development standard, in this case, the maximum height, the request is processed the same as the original approval. That means we review the request against the zone change criteria, and a full analysis has been provided in the staff report. In short, staff finds that the request does comply with those criteria. The change in height is not expected to have an adverse effect. The applicant's middle included with the staff report demonstrates that a rooftop helipad reduces impacts and improves safety as compared with a ground-based facility. The additional height cannot be achieved through any other process such as a variance, and there are adequate facilities to serve a building of this height. The comprehensive plan and the zoning documents are not detailed enough to discuss the specific development standards for hospital use. The image on this slide is an excerpt from the comprehensive plan, which designates the property in that pink color as having a mix of uses and serving as a destination. Staff finds that it is appropriate to recognize the unique needs of a hospital use through this amendment. This request required a neighborhood meeting to be held prior to the application being submitted, and that took place last fall in October. There were three members of the public in attendance. The height proposal was also sent on referral to service providers, and there were no concerns. Written comments received as of June twelfth are provided as an attachment to the staff report. Those included letters from two property owners within Clear Creek Crossing and adjacent to PA One, who were supportive of the request. Comments from community members have been mixed, some supportive and some opposed. Written comments were accepted through noon today on Wheat Ridge Speaks, and an additional comment was submitted and provided to Council via email. Some concerns related to the blocking of views, and you'll see photo simulations from the applicant in their presentation. Some concerns have been related to the sign posting, which I'll address in a moment. And we've also received a comment about how this request relates to the height limitations in the city charter. On this last point, I want to clarify that the subject property is part of a larger area that is exempted from the height limitations in the charter. In two thousand and eight, Wheat Ridge voters exempted the properties within the urban renewal areas along I seventy, along Wadsworth, and at the transit station. This means height is regulated not by the charter, but by the underlying zoning on the subject property. So this specific request is permitted and is not contrary to the city charter. Hearing on February twentieth and recommended approval. This request was originally scheduled for public hearings in April at City Council on the thirteenth and then twenty-seventh. With the COVID pandemic and new virtual meeting format, the first reading was actually redone on May eleventh. The hearing was scheduled for June eighth, but a legal protest was received on the same day, resulting in an automatic continuation to June twenty-second. There have been comments from the community and from Council over the last three months about public notice associated with those hearing dates, so I want to clarify what that has been. For each scheduled public hearing, now four times, we have sent letter notice to the property owners within three hundred feet of the perimeter of the property. That is measured from the exterior perimeter of the overall development, the red line shown in the image here. City Code also requires that a sign be posted on the subject property on all street frontages. And in this case, all four times, the yellow posting sign has been directed at the northern boundary of the property close to Clear Creek Trail, at the Fortieth Avenue overpass, and at the southern boundary of the site. Code also requires that the hearing be published in a newspaper of general circulation, and in this case, we use the Wheat Ridge transcript. And lastly, we provide notice on the city's website. As I mentioned, the legal protest resulted in the continuation of this hearing from June eighth to June twenty-second. The city charter and code outline the process and implications for protest against a zone change ordinance. When a protest is received after the first reading, as in this case, the code requires an automatic continuation to the Council's next meeting. In this case, seven owners representing six properties submitted a protest. Those properties and owners are not within Wheat Ridge, but are adjacent to the southern portion of Clear Creek Crossing in unincorporated Jefferson County. The charter does not limit protest rights to Wheat Ridge citizens. The protests filed do not cite a reason for their objection. And again, the charter and code do not require a reason be stated for the protest. While this specific height request affects only Planning Area One, an amendment to the underlying zoning is processed as an amendment to the entire planned development zoning. In this case, that means all measurements related to the protest are taken based on the full boundary of the Clear Creek Crossing project, not simply from Planning Area One. This image again shows the boundary of Clear Creek Crossing and the PMUD boundary in solid red, and the location of Planning Area One shown in a dashed red line. Per charter, a protest is valid if it is signed by the owners who comprise twenty percent of the area within one hundred feet of any side of the property. In this case, the area within one hundred feet of the southern boundary is shown by the blue stripe. The property owners who have signed the protest are shown in yellow, and that yellow area comprises twenty percent of the blue stripe. And therefore, the protest has been deemed valid. The outcome of that valid protest is that six positive votes are needed from council members in order to approve the request, instead of the standard five votes required for an ordinance. Ultimately, staff is recommending approval of this request for the limited height increase for the permitted hospital use in Planning Area One. Eventually, in terms of next steps, the applicant will be submitting a specific development plan application, which would include more development details. The site and building design would be reviewed by staff and the Planning Commission through that process. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mikulak. Mr. Goff, is the applicant here, and does the applicant wish to make a, a presentation or a statement at this time?
Yes, they are. I think there is numerous members from SCL, and I see Steve Chung is on. Steve, are you going to start or?
I think Mr. Doll, do you have any comments to add to the staff presentation at this time? Sorry.
You're on mute, Jerry. Jerry.
There we go. Good. Good. Uh, I want to touch on two things that, to subject Ms. Mikulak mentioned briefly. That is, first, on the various noticing and posting requirements. There have been a series of questions about the various requirements. And I've carefully reviewed each of these with the staff and against the relevant requirements, primarily in the code. And will tell you that, that those, those requirements were met, and the Council has jurisdiction to hear the case and is obliged to hear the case now that it's been fully noticed. With respect to voting requirements, Ms. Mikulak also mentioned that there was a valid protest that had been received. And she detailed how that was measured. And in this particular case, the planet, the PUD itself is rather large, and the planning area that this affects is considerably north, as you have seen from the southern, the boundary of the planning area. But nevertheless, we have come to the conclusion, I've worked with staff on this, and they have properly and conservatively measured the sides of, of the entire PUD, because that's what's being amended, is the entire PUD. And therefore, it is the southerly side of that PUD that's at issue here when you have protests. I will tell the Council, because you've received, I think, copy of a letter from the applicant's attorney as of last week, challenging the protest on that basis. On two bases, really, the south side isn't really the south side, and that really the measurement should have been just the planning area, not the entire PUD. And I agree with Ms. Mikulak and don't agree with the applicant's attorney that our rules require that it is, in fact, the entire PUD. And the staff made frankly a legitimate and reasonable determination in an oddly shaped parcel. This is not a rectangle. It's an oddly shaped parcel, but that doesn't mean you still have to figure out, you don't have to figure out where the south side is. You were obliged to do that. And interestingly, as Council might recall, in some of the example diagrams that were presented to Council last fall when the protest procedures ordinance was adopted, there was actually one example, I think it was letter F, as in Frank, that had an irregular boundary. And part of the boundary, in that particular case, faced a different direction, as is true here. But when you look at the overall boundary, you come to the conclusion that there is a reasonable southerly boundary. And the staff's determination was reasonable. For that reason, the objections raised, I believe, are not valid. And for that reason, the voting requirement for Council tonight, where you to approve the application, will require six votes. That's all I've got.
Thank you very much, Mr. Goff. Nothing further from the staff side?
No, now we can turn to the applicant.
Very good. Mr. Chung, nice to have you. We will let the applicant have their presentation now. Mr. Chung, we're not getting an audio transmission from you.
Well, there we go. Polycom's unneeded. Thank you.
There you go.
Good. Thank you. So, good evening, Mayor, City Council members, and residents of the City of Wheat Ridge. My name is Stephen Chung. I'm the Senior Vice President for Supply Chain and Real Estate for SCL Health. I want to express our appreciation of having this virtual meeting in these extraordinary times. I think it was alluded to earlier. We do have, we're here at the Lutheran Hospital, and we've got our team here. So let me just give you a brief roundtable of who's in here. We try to assemble a team as we get into specific clinical or operational questions that they can be able to address. I've got Dr. Stephen Brown, who's the Chief Medical Officer, here with us. I've got Michael Larson, who manages our emergency services. I've got Bruce Fong, who's our Senior Director for Planning Instruction. We have Lynn Moore and Charlie Meyer from our, from our architecture firm. Also joining us remotely are Dr. Christopher Zaman, who's the Director of our trauma program, as well as Dr. David Rutherford, who's an ER physician. I also have my co-presenter here. Many of you know Grant Wicklund. We're going to be co-presenting today. And I also have on the line remotely Casey Batterson. He's a lead helicopter pilot and training captain for Air Life of Denver. Grant and I would like to cover five areas. First, provide some background on SCL Health and the Lutheran Medical Center. Show the site location of the project. Discuss the proposed amendment. Provide project information on the proposed new campus and medical facility. And discuss the process we have undertaken. I'd now like to turn this over to Grant to really cover who SCL Health is and Lutheran. So Grant's going to slide on over here, and you're going to get a new face in front of the screen. Grant, you can drive from there.
Drive with that bucket. Yeah. Okay, good evening. I hope everyone can hear me. So I'd like to tell you a little bit about SCL Health. For those of you who don't know it, I'm Grant Wicklund. I'm the President and CEO of Lutheran Medical Center. And I'm going, oh, it's doing it on its own. I'm going to talk a little bit about SCL Health. It's the parent company of Lutheran. I'm going to talk a little bit about SCL Health, who's the parent company of Lutheran Medical Center, and it's an organization with eight hospitals that's based in Wheat Ridge, I mean, in Broomfield, Colorado, and there we go. This thing is driving itself, and I am not, even though I'm a young man, I'm not that technically savvy. So you can see, this is the overview of the mission, vision, and values of SCL Health, and I know all of you can read better than I can, and so I'm not going to go through them line by line, and I'll skip that, but you can see that SCL Health is an organization with hospitals in Montana and Colorado, is committed to community benefit. We're a not-for-profit organization, and we spend a lot of money on that. This is the location for our hospitals, both in Montana and in Colorado, and in Colorado, they range from the Western Slope to the Denver area, and this is really hurrying me along, so that's good. Lutheran, Good Samaritan, Flat Valley, and St. Joseph are our hospitals in this area. As far as Lutheran goes, I know all of you know a lot about Lutheran. We've been here in one form or another since 1905, and as an acute care hospital since 1961. These are some stats on Lutheran Medical Center. Again, there's 2,000 people that work here, 900 physicians, and 600 volunteers. We're the largest employer in Wheat Ridge, and we're a busy organization with a behavioral health hospital, an acute care hospital, hospice, and other parts of the organization. And our role in the community here is also one of providing benefit to the community above and beyond just providing acute care services, which you can see here. We're nationally recognized, it's something that we're really proud of for Wheat Ridge. We've been named one of America's 50 best hospitals by Healthgrades, which is headquartered in Colorado. Go back. And we've been, we've been so recognized, three consecutive years in a row, we're the only hospital in five-state region to get that recognition from, I just will not give up, from Healthgrades, which is a recognized national organization. We also have received an A for patient safety 12 consecutive times in a row, again, one of the very few hospitals in the entire West to receive that. So we're really proud of the quality of care that's delivered here at Lutheran Medical Center, and we're proud of the hospital, and I just can't stop this presentation from going forward. It's on the speed thing. So I'll leave it at that, and ask, are there any questions about, generally about SCL Health and Lutheran Medical Center that I could answer?
I think, Mr. Wicklund, we'll take questions later on when we get to that part of the program.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll turn this over to Steve again then.
Thanks, Brad. Let me see, I think what happened is you've got this thing sort of autopilot.
Steve Camille Burman.
This is going to be really slow now.
Just a mess with, I'm going to go ahead and just go in advance, it's manually here, so. So what I'd like to do is just pivot and start talking about the site location of the new medical campus. So as Lauren mentioned, this is the PA Site 1, it's on the southern, southern part of I-70 and Highway 58. We'll give some additional views here, so here's a view from I-70 looking west, so that's the first view, and the second is that northern view from 40th Avenue. So that gives you a sense of what the, what the site location looks like. So what I would like to now do is really pivot to the specifics of the ODP amendment. As mentioned before, and we think that this is an important point, is that the location, PA 1, is currently, the proposed uses are currently allowed under the, under the existing zoning, so that's, those allowed uses include hospital, helipad, and medical office buildings. And our request here is really solely about the height, and as it's mentioned before, what we need to be able to do for the patient floors is increase that height from 90 to 102 feet for a six-story building to accommodate new design standards, new code standards that are appropriate for a, for a modern hospital. And then the second is to allow for overruns to 135 feet that allows us to put a helipad on the roof. And we'll get into some more specifics around why the helipad on the roof, but this is really about not trying to change any uses, we're going to keep to the existing allowed uses, but asking for a change in height. So this is the, this is a little bit more detail in terms of how the hospital lays out in the overall clear creek development. Let me zoom in a little bit closer, and what you see here is, what we're proposing in the application is a 250-bed hospital with a parking structure and two medical office buildings. The thing that we're all very excited about is the SCL Health system, and hopefully, the city of Wheat Ridge is, is this is an opportunity for us to build a state-of-the-art medical facility that will incorporate the latest technology and design to what we think will deliver outstanding healthcare to the community members in a place that, quite frankly, all of Wheat Ridge should be able to be very proud of. Here's some, here's some views of what the proposed development will look like, so this is the view looking southwest, you can see the hospital, medical office buildings in that lighter gray color. The purple represents the parking structure, just for reference, the yellow is the apartment building that's been under, been under development. Here's a view of, excuse me, way to scroll down there. Here's a view in the opposite direction, so again, this is the same view, coming at it from the other way. We're also providing some views along I-70. Here you see the hospital, the parking structure, and then what you can see is the overrun for the elevator. And we'll show some more views of this, but one of the things I think you'll see as we represent this, is the elevator overrun represents a very small footprint from the overall buildings that will be developing. Here's the other view going eastbound on I-70, and here you can see where we have the advantage of the natural topography of the development, and that our development sits in this sort of low-lying valley along I-70. We wanted to make sure that we also, because obviously, when we're asking for a height increase, views become a concern, and we just, we wanted to be able to demonstrate from multiple angles that we aren't impacting anybody's view negatively. So here's the view from the 16th tee box from the Applewood Golf Course. This shows what it would look like at the existing 90 feet with 120-foot elevator overrun, so by contrast, let me show you what it looks like for the existing zone change. So that's the 102 feet with 135 feet. Let me just toggle back and forth. So what you can see is that, again, this is a very modest and subtle change in the height, and given that this is towards I-70, we're really not impacting anybody's view, per se. I also wanted, because of the protest that's been filed, we wanted to also provide what the views look like from that neighborhood, and to really, again, show you that the changes, again, looking towards I-70, again, are very modest. So here's what it looks like under the current zoning, and I'll toggle to what it looks like at the 135 feet for the elevator run and the 102 feet for the hospital. So again, we just go back and forth, so that's at the 90 feet, this is at the 102 feet. And again, since we're looking from that neighborhood towards I-70, again, this is not, per se, impacting somebody's view to the mountains, and again, given the distance of this development from our overall development, again, the change is very modest. So let me, let me also give you a little bit more of a detailed cross-section of what the hospital would look like. And so what I have to the left here is the existing Lutheran Medical Campus. So that is a six-story building. It is an older hospital, and this is where we have the 91-feet height. And what you see to the, to the, to the right of this is what we're proposing, you can see how it changes to the 102 feet, to really accommodate the larger floor-to-ceiling requirements for the patient floors. And we mentioned before, codes have changed as it relates to things like how we handle air and exchange air in our hospitals for a lot of obvious reasons, as well as medical equipment has gotten much more complicated, and our ability to service medical equipment. We need to be in the floors and up in the ceilings, and so that's really why we need that increased patient floor height. Let me pivot to the helicopter, because I think that's the other, the other thing, is we have heard back around the concerns. So we wanted to make sure that we were providing a lot of detail around the helicopter and the helipad design. So I think, first of all, it's important to understand that the helicopter transport services provide services to our most critical patients, our ability to get our patients to us, or our ability to get patients out to somewhere else where the care is more appropriate. And in there, there are cases where that is just something that we have to do from a clinical perspective. What I'd also do here is this is where we're giving you more detail. So this is the, this is the 135-feet overrun that we're talking about, it's the red, so you can, again, see that it's a very small footprint of the overall development. And we're talking about five flights a month, based on what we currently see at Lutheran and the trauma designation, so this is not, this is not a heliport, this is not a refueling operation. These helicopters come in, they spend some brief time on the pad, and take off. This is not a place where you, where we operate helicopters out of. So I think the next question then becomes, why on the roof? And I think there are three important things to understand here. The first is, it's what's best for the patients. So when we land a helipad, a helicopter on a rooftop helipad, that allows us the fastest and quickest way of transporting our patients from, from the elevator on the roof vertically to our procedural areas and our emergency room. I would contrast that by a ground-based helicopter, where we have to literally drive an ambulance up to the helipad, that person has to be put in the ambulance, transferred to the ER, then taken out of the ambulance, and that's where we lose some valuable time. The second is, it is a quieter solution, so because we're already elevated, the helicopter spends less time trying to navigate to the campus and less time at lower elevations. And third, and related to that, is a safety issue. So a rooftop helicopter is a very controlled environment, nobody can just get up to the, to the, to the rooftop, so whereas if it's on the ground, your ability to control that axis is much more limited, your ability to control what may be around there and create debris is also much more limited. So it's just a safer place for the overall environment. Let me switch to the next slide. This shows what the helicopter flight path would most likely be, so you can see that a north-side approach and departure, you can see how it also takes off to the north along Highway I-70, or into the wind along 58, and so, working with our helicopter pilots, we would tell them what our preferred paths are, and being able to operate along the highway interstates reduces the impact to the, to the local communities. There also have been lots of questions around the noise level that's created by the helicopter. So although, as part of our detailed applications, we will do a noise study, these are some estimates based on previous work, and estimating what the noise levels will be. So talking to our helicopter folks, we, the helicopters will typically operate at about a 500-foot altitude, and then when you measure that distance from that altitude down to the ground level, that noise at the ground level is equivalent to about 90.3 decimals, so that's a straight vertical drop, and that's going to be the equivalent noise around, that's already existing around the I-70 corridor. So in other words, the noise of that surrounding community will not be all that different from a perception basis, from what's already being created by I-70. Now let's look what happens on the rooftop. So although the, although the helicopter, as I mentioned before, will not be spending much time on the rooftop, when you then start measuring out on a radius basis to that community, with the nearest community around 1,500 feet by this diagram, with the vast majority of the residents even farther than that, the noise will be about equivalent to your next-door neighbor and their gas-powered lawnmower. And again, I would emphasize that the amount of time, you know, there's, you know, we want to get that helicopter in and out as fast as possible, so the amount of time that it actually spends on the roof is going to be fairly minimal at that 100 feet. So, sorry guys. And then I wanted to provide you a very specific example, and this has, this is a, this is a reference to our St. Joseph's Hospital, and how the 135 feet work. So this hospital, we built as our replacement hospital in downtown Denver. This hospital's 133 feet, so just under the two feet. It shows how we place the helicopter on the roof. And we've allowed the extra two feet, so to speak, just in case the elevator technology has changed, but this is a good example of what a modern hospital design would look like, and how we've applied that to, to a hospital that we built in the, in the last six years. So at the risk of not being, at the risk of being repetitive here, I just, I want to come back and make sure that we understand the reasons why the height variance. So again, we want to build a new, modern hospital with the best technology in it, and to do that in six floors, you know, we need that additional height. And with respect to the helipad on the roof, it is the safest, it is the most effective, and it is the most quiet option of anything else we can consider, and I think we have to be a bit careful here. If the helipad is not on the roof, given that it's an approved use, it will be noisier, and it could potentially be closer to the city of Wheat Ridge residents if we have to put it on the ground. We have to be careful that we don't have an unintended consequence that, quite frankly, I don't think any members of the city of Wheat Ridge would like, because one, it will compromise our care, and two, quite frankly, it's going to be noisier. So I would now like to shift to just talk then, I think Lauren and others have mentioned this, but we have gone through a process, it's been under the guidance of city staff. We had a pre-application meeting on September 5th, a neighborhood meeting on October 23rd. The ODP amendment was submitted in December of 2019, and we received Planning Commission hearing approval on February 20th, and that brings us here today, seeking approval for this, for this variance. In closing, just wanted to share with you what our commitment for Lutheran and SCL Health is to this community. We're going to continue to be a good neighbor, we're going to continue to contribute to the vitality of this business community as the city's largest employer, we're going to provide high-quality, low-cost healthcare to the patients and families we have the privilege to serve. I'd like to thank you for the time, and look forward to continuing to facilitate open and engaging dialogue as our plans develop. So again, thank you for everybody's time.
Well, thank, pardon me, thank you very much for the presentation. Mr. Goff, do you have any further staff input on this at this time?
I believe that's it for staff at this time.
Okay, thank you so much. I would like to now go to a public comment, and we will start with in-person comment, and then we will start with the raise-your-hand feature, and then we will, we will take phone comment. Mischek, do we have anyone in council chambers wishing to speak on this item?
No, Mayor, we don't.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone in the raise-hand feature who would like to speak on this, Mischek?
Yes, the first person with their handout was Terry Urbanowski.
Okay. Mr. Urbanowski, please, please continue.
I would just like to say that I would...
Before you get, before you get started, would you please, would you please give us your first name and last name, and would you... and last name, and would you give us an address, please?
Terry Urbanowski. I'm at 8015 Melrose Drive.
Thank you very much. Now you may continue.
I'm relatively close to the existing Lutheran hospital. I have never had a problem with noise from the existing helicopters going in and out. I think that having a high-quality, state-of-the-art hospital is a great asset for Wheat Ridge, and I hope that we provide the variance that the hospital needs to do their development.
Thank you so much. Ms. Shek, do we have additional people with their hands raised?
Yes. Next, Mayor, we have Lindsey Burney.
Okay. Ms. Burney.
Good evening. Lindsey Burney, B-U-R-N-E-Y. I'm at 3880 Garrison Street. And similar to the previous speaker, I live really close to the current hospital and haven't had any issues with noise. But I wanted to read something. In the past few months, have taught us anything, it's that hospitals truly are an essential organization, where doctors, nurses, food service workers, housekeepers, and more show up day in and day out to take care of the sickest of the sick. And to provide a little perspective, much of the current hospital, Lutheran Medical Center on 38th Avenue, was built in the 60s. During that era, the hospital was state-of-the-art. But as we know, building codes change, technologies developed and refined, and best practices, they continue to evolve. So fast forward today, 60 years later, Lutheran Medical Center is no longer a state-of-the-art, and it is becoming challenging for the hospital to operate in a building that old. So you might be asking, many people that are paying attention, listening at home, and the council members, why, why height variance? It seems really unnecessary. Well, can't the hospital operate within the current allotment? Five years ago, before I was hired at Lutheran, I would have said the exact same thing. However, if you're not in the healthcare field, you really have no idea. So much has changed in the past 60 years, such as technology, equipment, the level of care a patient receives that has changed healthcare and the needs that healthcare provides. To have a new, state-of-the-art medical facility in our community without sacrificing the level of care expected from Lutheran Medical Center, the variance request is truly very minimal. I am very proud to work for a hospital and a hospital system such as SCL Health that continues to win awards for top patient care, top patient safety, and high patient and employee satisfaction. I am proud that this hospital is here in Wheat Ridge, a place where I call home. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Shek, do we have additional people with their hands raised on the Zoom format?
We have several, Mayor, and the next on the list is Ed.
Ed, please introduce yourself and give us your address, and you may continue.
Hi, Edward Palito, address 3251 Oak Street. I have worked also at Lutheran for many years. I'm the former trauma director, and have just grown prouder of the hospital as it has improved and grown over the years. As you know, this is one of, I think, the most important institutions in Wheat Ridge. And in our country of 5,000 hospitals, we are a top 50 hospital, and we deserve truly a class hospital here. And in its new position, I think a helicopter pad at that height would provide growth and opportunity for the hospital and be very important in providing excellent healthcare to our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Shek, do we have additional people with their hands raised in the Zoom feature?
We do, Mayor, and the next is Tyler Carlson.
Mr. Mayor and Council, thank you so much for the opportunity. Tyler Carlson, managing partner at Evergreen Development. And as the property owner, most impacted by this change, since Evergreen is the owner of all the immediately surrounding properties adjacent to the SCL campus, I want to offer, in my full-hearted support for the SCL application, I was part of the initial team that put together the current zoning. And had we known then what we know now, all these requests would have already been incorporated into the current zoning. But a lot has changed, as one of the previous speakers mentioned, over the last two years in healthcare. And we're fully supportive of these changes, which will allow SCL to build a campus that meets both the current and the future healthcare needs of the community. So we also specifically are very supportive of the relocation of the helipad to the roof. You having a helipad at ground level, you know, adjacent to our multifamily community next door and our retail would have been a negative for us. We, of course, were willing to support that because it's a necessary function for the hospital. But moving that six stories up, and the noise and the commotion that comes with that is a huge benefit, I think, to our project. And I think, at the end of the day, we want Lutheran to be successful, not only selfishly, because it will, you know, provide activity and co-tenancy for our project, but because we think it's the right thing to do. And I would like to say, I think some of the delay tactics that have been put on by some of the neighbors has been very disappointing. You know, months have transpired from when SCL should have had a right to bring this before council, and those delays are going to be months-long delays on the back end of getting a new hospital built. And I think we need to let Lutheran move as quickly as they can, because the sooner we have modern medical facilities in the west side of town, the healthier our populations will be, and the residents who have to go there will have those facilities available to them. So we're fully supportive and grateful to have Lutheran as a partner in our project.
Thank you very much. I'd like to ask, if you're not speaking, if you were able to mute your device, that would be appreciated, so that we don't get any background feedback. So thank you very much. Ms. Shek, are there additional hands raised?
Yes, Mayor. Zariana Marozovich.
Ms. Marozovich, please introduce yourself and your address, and you may continue.
Zariana Marozovich, 3651 Ward Road. So Section 510 of the Wheat Ridge Charter states at least 15 days' notice of the time and place of hearing, and the address and legal description of the property shall be published in an official paper or paper of general circulation within the city, and notice of the hearing shall be posted on the property so that it is easily visible to neighboring property owners. Said notices shall contain the statement that specific plans or the proposed changes are available for inspection at the Wheat Ridge City Hall. The property at Clear Creek Crossing was not properly noticed, and so the public hearing should not be open tonight. A few examples include, the signs did not contain the required wording. The signs were not posted properly and were not easily visible to neighboring property owners. One sign was posted on the side of a road closure fence at the far end of the I-70 underpass and did not even face the street. It was visible only to someone who drove all the way up to the barricade and then knew where to look for it. The other signs, other sign was posted on private property on a fence across from the side of the Denny's Building. This sign was not visible even from the La Quinta property, which borders the development. To read the sign, one would have to walk well into private property. Neither sign met the charter requirements. Section 26-109 of the Wheat Ridge Code further requires one sign per street frontage, that signs shall be posted within property boundaries, and that they shall be visible from the street without obstruction. Only two signs were found. Neither was within property boundaries. Neither was visible from an open street. Also, the signs state that information is available on WheatRidgeSpeaks.org, but this information did not appear on the listed website until 10 days before the scheduled hearing, and therefore did not meet the 15-day notice requirement. The published notice was also deficient. For example, it did not include the legal description of the property or the statement concerning availability of plans at City Hall, which are required by the charter. The published notice contains the statement, "The proposed ordinances and accompanying documents are available in electronic form on the city's official website," and that's www.cii.wetridge.co.us/legalnotices. Going to this site results in the following message, "We're sorry, but there is not a webpage matching your entry." As shown by these examples, neither the letter nor the spirit of the law was met, and this hearing should not take place." Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Shek, do we have another hand raised?
We do, Mayor, and that's Kristy.
Kristy, please introduce yourself and give us your address, and you may proceed.
Good evening, Council. My name's Kristy Davis, 7975 West 39th Avenue. I would like to share my support of this height variance for Lutheran Medical Center. Again, I believe our community does deserve a state-of-the-art facility, and it would be a disservice to our community and our surrounding communities not to allow for this height variance. Also, I would like to say, I was a part of the St. Joe's build, and they also had to ask for a variance for the small elevator shaft in their facility as well. But if any of you have also been in that facility, I think you could see the differences of a modern healthcare facility. And again, it's something that is welcomed in our city.
Thank you. Ms. Shek, do we have additional hands raised?
We do, Mayor. Next is Jeff Wickstrom.
Mr. Wickstrom, please introduce yourself, and then you may proceed with your address.
Hello, Council. My name is Jeff Wickstrom. I am, I live at 152 Willa Leaf Drive in Littleton. I'm also the president of Evergreen Devco's Multifamily Group here in Colorado. We were, we are super excited about building our 310 apartment development adjacent to the hospital for several reasons. Our 500 residents will, some of many of which I think will work for the hospital, will have the proximity to healthcare. And we are in strong support of relocating the helipad to the roof and raising the elevation of the building. When we purchased this property in October, we knew that there were several hospitals that were in the hunt for this land. And so, you know, we really are excited about being adjacent to that, or to be part of the mixed-use development. And the noise that goes with that is something that comes with being next to all those jobs, as well as the retail that it will support. We do think, though, that having the heliport moved to the top of the building and close to the interstate will be a benefit to our residents and lowering the noise impact to them from what was, from having the heliport on the ground. So we're thankful to be working with SCL here, and they've been a great partner for us as we've both been working, developing our sites together and through the process at the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Ms. Shek, do we have additional hands raised?
Well, there was one hand that was up for quite a while, and that is S049685. So if you'd like to speak, it's your turn.
Is that, is that guest with that number with us, and would you like to speak?
The hand is back up now.
Okay. And please give us that telephone number, Ms. Shek.
It's like a code. It's S049685.
Am I coming through?
Yes, sir, you are. Please introduce yourself, give us your address, and you may proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Bill Needham, and I am not a Wheat Ridge resident. I live at 24336 Choke Cherry Lane in Golden. I am the emergency department director. And my focus here would be on facilitating care and being as efficient as possible when it comes to providing care to patients that are the most critical. When it comes to somebody that's inbound with a stroke or a heart attack or trauma, the more moving parts that we have to work with, the more complicated and more room for error can occur. In our current state, where we have a remote ambulance pad, we have to have an ambulance crew, and we have to work with our security and several other factors to get the patient from the ground upon landing into the emergency department, and then on to the operating room or the cath lab or what have you. Whereas if they're landing on the building, that takes several steps-
I got to log back in, because when I opened a new pad, it went to this.
If you, pardon me, pardon me, Mr. Needham. If you're not speaking, would you please mute your telephones? Thank you.
I am muted. Am I coming through still, or?
Yes, sir, Mr. Needham. I'm sorry, we had another interference on the line. Please proceed.
So as I was saying, thank you. But when it comes to having a helipad on the top of the facility and being able to directly route a patient from the helicopter into, whether it's the operating room, or the emergency department, or the cath lab, or what have you, it takes several steps out of the equation and makes things much more simple and much more efficient. And while we have people that do those extra things that are very qualified and very hardworking and very, do great work, it just makes things more complicated. So if we can have that helipad and have this variance, it's going to go a long ways to providing enhanced care to the most critical patients that we see.
Thank you. Ms. Shek, do we have additional hands raised?
We do, Mayor. We have Jerry DiTulio.
Mr. DiTulio.
Hello, Council. I wanted to encourage Council to approve this change tonight. This doesn't only benefit Wheat Ridge. This new facility, as is mentioned earlier, is going to benefit Applewood, North Lakewood, South Irvine. Population of Jefferson County is growing, and we need facilities that are modern to take care of this population. I know that some people don't like the growth in our Jefferson County, but it's happening. And we have to manage it and work with it. This facility will be state-of-the-art. And for anybody who would oppose this because of the helipad, I mean, you're maybe opposing something that may save your life later. I mean, I'd rather have that available to me if I was out and I was hurt, rather than have to go somewhere else farther. So this has been delayed more than once, but I think it's time for Council to, you know, put the rubber on the road to get this approved one way or the other, because it benefits the community, it benefits, benefits Jefferson County, and it benefits a lot of the people living in this area, because it's going to be a brand-new, state-of-the-art facility that's going to benefit the folks of Jefferson County, not just Wheat Ridge. So I'd encourage you to go with the six or more votes that pass this, especially in this time of COVID and everything else going on. You need this facility. It's going to be a great addition to that area near the highway. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. DiTulio. For the record, would you please give us your name and address?
Sorry, Mayor, one second. I just need to go back and... I disabled him from talking. I'm so sorry. One second.
That's okay.
Okay, Mr. DiTulio. My apologies.
I don't see his name on the screen. Perhaps we've-
Jerry. There I am. Jerry DiTulio, D-I-T, Ohio. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Mr. DiTulio. Ms. Shek, do we have additional hands raised?
I don't see any, Mayor.
Okay. Are there any other, any other members of the public on the telephone who would like to speak on this matter, who I haven't heard from? I would like to hear from you. If you would speak up, I will recognize you. Okay, I don't hear any other members of the public. Thank you all for participating. We're going to close our public comment portion on this public hearing. I'm going to go to Mr. Dahl, please.
Thank you very much. Mayor, I wanted to make a very quick record on the ability of Councilmember Dozeman to participate. And occasionally, when Lutheran matters come up, I'm needed to make that record. And I know I've done that a few short questions with her in the past. And just for the purpose of the record, tonight, I'd like to be able to do that, if you'll indulge me in a Q and A with Councilmember Dozeman.
Please proceed, Mr. Dahl and Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you. Ms. Dozeman, it's- Thank you. Ms. Dozeman, it's, is it correct that you are employed by SCL? Is that right?
Yes.
And what is your position?
I work in the medical staff office at Lutheran.
I see. Are you in management?
No.
Do you have input, or have you had, or would you ever have input on questions such as the application for the variance that's in front of the council tonight?
No.
Will you remain employed at SCL whether or not the application tonight is approved?
Yes.
Can you render a decision tonight simply based on the evidence that's adduced here in this hearing?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, based upon those questions in that record as well as the requirement of the charter that councilmembers without a conflict are required to participate and required to vote, I conclude that the result of the Q and A and the charter provisions requires Ms. Dozeman to participate.
Thank you, Mr. Dahl. Okay, I'm going to open the, open this up to questions from council now. If you have questions, if you'd please raise your hand, I will call on you. Does council have any questions of the applicant or the staff? Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's maybe a question for the city attorney. As a volunteer board member for the Lutheran Medical Center Foundation, which is a separate distinct entity from SCL Health, just wanted to verify, I had a constituent ask me in that regard to verify that there is no conflict of interest, and I just wanted to confirm that with the city attorney.
Okay, Mr. Dahl, can you respond, please?
Thank you very much. Yes, that's, that's correct. And in fact, I can just ask you some of the same questions. I think, I think we've had a Q and A before on this. Obviously, you're not employed by SCL. Is that correct?
Correct. I am not employed by SCL.
And are you able to, do you have any input based upon your, your position at the foundation in, in any form of land use application that SCL might make, including the one for the council tonight?
No.
Based upon that, can you render a decision simply based on the evidence that's forth in this hearing tonight?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I rendered, I reached the same conclusion as I did for Ms. Dozeman. Councilmember Urban may participate, and in fact, is required to without having, not having a conflict.
Thank you very much. Are there additional questions from council, of staff or the applicant? Ms. Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am just wondering now, what trauma level is Lutheran Hospital?
Oh, how about grab, take that? Yes, right now Lutheran is Level 3 Trauma.
Okay, so, Trauma 1 is going to go to St. Anthony's?
There is virtually no difference between service for Level 1 Trauma and Level 2 Trauma, actually. Level 1 Trauma generally and mostly indicates that there are academics and research around the program, which we're not planning on doing. Level 2 Trauma, we will eventually move to Level 2 Trauma, we believe, but we're not interested in being Level 1 Trauma. However, again, it would be the rare exception that would require attendance to Level 1 Trauma versus Level 2.
Okay, so by that, that means that there obviously would be less helicopter trips?
Well, I, I, I can't exactly predict how many helicopter trips, but we don't expect there to be a lot of helicopter traffic, frankly. We, we function, while we're Level 3 Trauma now, in many ways, we function as Level 2. This is a very complex and, and stalwart trauma program here now, and we still only have four or five helicopter trips a month at most.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have additional questions of council for staff or for the applicant? I don't see any before I, before I close the public hearing and ask for motion. Are there any, any further questions of, of council for staff or the applicant? I'm going to close the public hearing. Mr. Steitz, a motion is in order.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill Number 10-2020 in ordinance approving an amendment to existing planned mixed-use development, PMUD zoning, to increase the allowable height for hospital uses at Clerk Creek Crossing on second reading, and that it takes effect 15 days after final publication for the following reasons. One, the planning commission has recommended approval for the rezoning after concluded, or after conducting a proper public hearing. Two, the proposed rezoning has been reviewed by the Community Development Department, which has forwarded its recommendation of approval. Three, the proposed rezoning has been found to comply with criteria for review in Section 26-603 of the law, of the Code of Laws. Okay.
We have a motion and a second by Mr. Urban. Is there discussion on the motion? Ms. Hoppy.
I thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just did want to kind of address that there are, have been times as council that we have seen things that are, are, we're in a more of a reactive status rather than a proactive status, and that's because things change. And, you know, our, our code sometimes is written a long time ago, and, and when the code is written for hospitals, they didn't have the new updated standards and technology. And so I, I understand that it can sometimes be frustrating to have to see things as an amendment, but that's kind of the, the way of the world sometimes. Now, sometimes we get lucky and we're able to be proactive on something. But I, I don't think it's, it should be a detriment to the hospital that we had something that, you know, we need to be reactive to.
Thank you. Is there additional discussion on the motion from the council? Mr. Urban.
Hey, Mr. Mayor. I do have on occasion helicopter fly over my house, a flight for life. And when I see that, I, I say a quick prayer for those that are in there and also for the pilots that are manning those vehicles, because we know that they're there for a reason that nobody wants to be in and to know that that facility or that option is available to those that visit that hospital, I think is a great option. I don't disagree that that could be a noisy situation from time to time, but it's a noise that represents people who are coming to safety and being helped. So I think that's a great thing, and I think we need to encourage that and understand that this is a very limited in-scope height change. Isn't indicating any kind of widespread, you know, removal of any other height restrictions. So I'll be voting in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Steitz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I agree with what, well, both what Ms. Hoppy and Mr. Urban have just said. You know, additionally, I live in, in the neighborhood pretty close to there. And, you know, I also used to live fairly close to some of the neighbors that spoke tonight over by Lutheran Hospital and the helipad over there. Honestly, as many times as the helicopter landed on the ground, I don't think that we ever really noticed it very often. So I don't believe, especially being near a highway, it's going to be much of a detriment to, to many of us that live in the neighborhood. So in fact, I, I believe according to the evidence, it might make it worse if it were on the ground and, and we had to deal with that noise. So I definitely appreciate that, and I appreciate the neighbors who, who were, you know, against it. But I do feel that this is probably the best way to move forward, so I'll be supporting this as well.
Thank you very much. Is there additional discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we will go to a vote. If you are in favor of the motion, please raise your hand so that the clerk can see it. And would the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed eight to nothing.
Thank you very much. Thanks to all the people who presented in tonight's public hearing. We appreciate your joining us tonight. We will now move to agenda item number three. Ms. Nosler Beck, would you please introduce this item?
Thanks, Mayor. Council Bill Number 12-2020, in ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at 11... Sorry, I'll just do 11,700 West 46th Avenue from Agricultural 1 to Residential 2, case number WZ-20-04/11700W46thAvenue. At issue, the applicant is requesting approval of a zone change from Agricultural 1 to Residential 2 for property located at 11,700 West 46th Avenue. The zone change will result in a zoning that matches surrounding zoning designations. It will also address the site's existing non-conforming conditions such that the existing duplex will go from a legal non-conforming use to a legal and conforming use that complies with the zoning.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on first reading to set the time, date, and location for a public hearing. Ms. Beck, Nosler Beck, a motion is in order.
I move to approve Council Bill Number... Wait, did I just go to the wrong one?
Nope, you're good.
Got it. Sorry. I move to approve Council Bill Number 12-2020 in ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at 11,700 West 46th Avenue from Agricultural 1 to Residential 2. Order it published with public hearing set for Monday, July 27, 2020, at 7:00 PM as a virtual meeting, and that it take effect 15 days after publication. Second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Steitz. Would the clerk please poll the council? If you're in favor of the resolution or the motion, please raise your hand.
Yes, sir. The motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. We will move to agenda item number four. Ms. Hoppy, would you please introduce agenda item number four?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a motion to approve an appointment to fill a District 1 vacancy on the Planning Commission. Due to the recent resignation of Richard Peterson from the Planning Commission, a vacancy in City Council District 1 currently exists. Determined this position expires on March 2, 2021. I would like to also ask that Councilwoman Hutchinson and I have had discussion, and we have agreed on who to appoint.
May I have a motion on agenda item number four?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to appoint Ari Kirchheimer to the Planning Commission for District 1 to fill a vacancy term ending March 2, 2021. Second.
Is there discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Will the clerk, will you please raise your hand in favor of the motion? And will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. Before we proceed to our next item, we're going to take a 10-minute recess. We will come back to, back in order at about 8:52. Thank you. convene our meeting. We are now on agenda item number five. Uh, Ms. Hulteen, would you please introduce agenda item number five?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce uh, resolution number thirty-five twenty twenty, a resolution condemning racism at issue. As a result of recent tragic events that have occurred across the country in the sadness expressed by the city of Wheat Ridge's mayor, city council, city manager, police department, and employees citywide, the city of Wheat Ridge wishes to approve a resolution condemning racism and hate. The city is committed to safeguarding our community while ensuring that the constitutional rights of every person who lives, works, and visits in our great city are protected. The city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado stands steadfast with all citizens of Wheat Ridge against racism and reaffirms its commitment to fighting for racial justice and human and civil rights for all. Resolution condemning racism that was originally drafted and published on Thursday was drafted by council members Hulteen, Nosler Beck, and Dozeman in collaboration with a diversity of community members, including participants in the local Wheat Ridge for Equity gatherings, advocates for local Spanish-speaking families, and other black leaders in Wheat Ridge. It was also informed by stories and statements from the June sixteenth Community Listening Session and the June ninth Community Forum with the Wheat Ridge Police Citizen Advisory Group. Since that was published on Thursday, we have been working, continued to work with the Wheat Ridge for Equity Group um, to make sure that the resolution that we are putting forward tonight and standing behind is one that is reflective of our community. I I would like to present to you the slightly revised version and read that into record so that we all have uh, the same resolution that we're working forward with. Um, so with your permission, I'd like to go ahead and read that in.
Please proceed.
Thank you. Um, title, a resolution condemning racism and hate. Whereas the city of Wheat Ridge, its mayor, city council, city manager, chief of police, the entire Wheat Ridge Police Department, and employees citywide are deeply saddened by the unnecessary deaths of black Americans, including the senseless death of George Floyd on May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty in Minneapolis, Minnesota. And whereas the city of Wheat Ridge affirms that the lives of black people matter, and the nationwide movement both articulates and brings awareness to the injustices that exist at the intersections of brass, race, class, and gender, including mass incarceration, police brutality, poverty, unaffordable housing, income disparity, homophobia and transphobia, gender inequality, poor access to healthcare, and poor access to equitably resourced education and educational opportunities. And whereas recent events are a compelling reminder that for the past four hundred and one years, including a hundred and fifty-five years since the abolition of slavery in the United States, violent acts and prejudice are perpetrated daily against black people in our country and in our own community. And whereas racism and hate have no place in our city, there is much work to be done to stop pervasive longstanding and devastating racial injustices in our community. And whereas we strive to be a community where all mothers, fathers, and caregivers can raise their children to feel safe, and where all people can feel safe regardless of the color of the skin, the language they speak, the country of origin, their religion, their gender identity, their sexual preference and ability. And whereas we are committed to safeguarding our community against the root causes of and the damages stemming from racism and hate, and to protecting the constitutional and human rights of every person who lives, works, and visits our city. And whereas the Wheat Ridge Police Department is a nationally accredited agency and has embraced the six pillars of policing from President Obama's Task Force on Twenty First Century Policing, including procedural justice, policy and oversight, technology and social media, community policing and crime reduction, officer training and education, and officer safety and wellness. And whereas the city of Wheat Ridge pledges to work alongside community leaders and residents to provide effective public safety while continuing to earn the trust of the community they serve. And whereas this resolution is an important step towards condemning racism and hate in all its forms, and that for true systematic change, it's incumbent on city leaders and community members to listen with open hearts and minds and to take informed and meaningful actions. And now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council of the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, stands steadfast with all citizens of Wheat Ridge against racism and reaffirm its commitment to fighting for racial justice and human and civil rights for all. Thank you. And I just want to add, um, while I wrote that in my voice, um, what we just heard was the voice of um, a couple of dozen different Wheat Ridge community members and elected officials. So it was truly a collaborative effort, and I'm really grateful for everyone who worked on that. Um, I think uh, Councilwoman Nosler Beck has a couple of things to add to that.
Thank you. Uh, Councilor Beck?
Thanks, uh, Councilor Hulteen and Mayor. Um, I just wanted to add that um, this this has been um, a a both counselor-led and community-led um, resolution. And one thing that we heard from um, community members um, was that it's important to uh, use this resolution as a as a starting point, um, lay the groundwork um, so that we can all get on the same page as to what kind of work we want to do as a community and as a city. Um, and it it leaves a lot of space for um, the community to still participate in this, but also it allows for us to move forward um, with uh, you know, city staff and and letting them know that um, you know, we're all on team and supporting them as they they work on this important work. Um, we uh, took into account that um, you know, we've had some people um, participate in the the um, Wheat Ridge for Equity um, gatherings that are happening at six o'clock um, most nights um, over on the green. And we've had um, people from out of the outside of of Wheat Ridge come and visit. We had the um, and members from the NAACP come and join us and and help us um, understand some more as to how we can how we can move forward and bring the whole community along with us. Um, and so, you know, it's it's been a collaborative effort. Um, but I think the important piece about this resolution that um, Councilwoman Dozeman and Councilwoman Hulteen and I had worked um, with other members of the of council as well on is that this is the starting the starting point. Um, and I look forward to working with all of you on it.
Thank you. Uh, I know we may have some more discussion with council, but I would like to uh, also have the the opportunity for the public to um, to speak on this issue. And I would like to go to uh, in-person uh, comments. Ms. Scheck, do we have uh, uh, citizens in our council chambers who would like to speak on this item?
Yes, Mayor, we do. We have Morgan Richards.
Uh, Ms. Richards, thank you. Please uh, give us your uh, introduce yourself, your first name and last name, and give us your address.
I am Morgan Richards, and uh, my last name is spelled R I C H A R D S, and I live at thirty-two fifty-five Ames Street. Again, I'm Morgan Richards, and I live in District One, and I'm the founder of Wheat Ridge for Equity. Thank you for this opportunity to speak about this resolution, which is an important first step to address racism and hate in Wheat Ridge. My mentor, one of my mentors, Dr. Nita Mosby Tyler, said today, equity work is not only collective work, it is also connected work. If we attempt this work in silos, we don't institutionalize much at all. In effect, we will not make change. We need every city department, staff member, and elected official, not just the police department, to help identify and address race and hate in our city, both institutional and personal. Myself and like-minded residents are here to learn and work alongside of all of you. We will ensure community involvement and hold you, our city leaders, accountable to this resolution's promise with clear and measurable actional action steps. I have three asks of you based on connecting with at least thirty-four community members, even as quickly at as as like thirty minutes before I got here. I was still hearing from people, starting Thursday, as soon as I got it, I started pushing it out because it is very important to have broad-based community support for this work. So my three asks. I would like to see, number one, commitments for equity training by a qualified and recognized equity trainer for our city leadership and staff. Two, I would like to see a community task force made up of diverse coalition members to help oversee, inspire, and inform this work. I would like, thirdly, that the task force lead a transparent systemic review of our Wheat Ridge departments and processes. Thank you very much for your vote tonight against racism and hate. This work matters to the to the ability of our community to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Richards. Uh, Ms. Scheck, do we have additional uh, citizens in the con in the council chambers?
No, Mayor, we don't.
Okay, thank you. Do we have um, of the uh, are there people with the raise hand function?
I don't see any raised hand. Oh, I do. I see um, Mike. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna do well with his last name. It's Mike K.
Okay, Mike K. Uh, I'd like to recognize you to speak. If you would uh, unmute your uh, your speaking device and give us your first name and last name and your address. Uh, I would love to hear from you.
Hello, everybody, and good evening. My name is Mike Senyak. My last name is spelled K S E N Y A K. Uh, I live at forty-four ninety-five Yarrow Street in District Two of Wheat Ridge. Uh, I've been a resident of Wheat Ridge for about five years now. Uh, this is, I've lived in two locations. This is my first home. Uh, I live in this house with my husband, uh, who is another gay man and a person of color. Uh, we love Wheat Ridge, and we have felt home here, uh, and welcomed here a majority of the time. And as much as we love this community, uh, we realize that we are just a small representation of um, different marginalized populations that make up our great uh, community uh, base. And I urge you to strongly consider and vote for and approve this resolution. It's empirical to our city moving forward to be a welcoming and safe community for all of its residents, um, including myself and my husband and our family, um, our friends, our neighbors, and other people we've met in the time that we've lived here. Um, I would like to second the three requests that Morgan Richards has stated. Um, to me, this this resolution is the first step and a very important first step. And I think the action and the work that the city uh, city leaders and the community can work on together collaboratively as we continue to develop and move our community into future. Uh, so it's welcoming and inclusive and equitable for all. Um, will be a a great testament to the strength of this community, the strength of this council, and uh, future that we can have before us. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments tonight. Uh, Ms. Scheck, do we have additional hands raised?
Um, yes, we do. We have Juan Perez Saez.
I'm sorry, I didn't. Yes. Please introduce yourself and give and uh, give us an address, and please uh, continue.
Hi, uh, this is the other better better half, uh, Juan Perez Saez, uh, forty-four ninety-five uh, Yarrow Street. Um, last name P E R E Z, Saez, S A E Z. Uh, I think it's very important, and I just, I I'll say, I want to third Morgan's request. I think there's three really important for our community and for what we want to build as a society, uh, that this work goes way beyond just the police. I think every person also who works, who lived, who navigates, who's experienced our city should be able to experience the fullest and the beauty of what we love at our home. Uh, if I tell you how many times I have worked with my husband into the rec center, and I have been asked if we are friends or if we know each other, or why we have the same uh, membership, it's just like a constant thing, which is always really weird. Most of the time, we just laugh about it, and other times we just feel like strangers, or feel like someone is criticizing who we are and what we do. Um, needless to say, um, as a person who's also an immigrant and who love the city, like, I cannot even imagine what are the black community in Wheat Ridge have to go through. And so I think it's very important for you all to take a vote tonight and think of every single one of us, uh, members of our communities who are also willing to work side by side with you to make this happen. Uh, and I hope you consider and and support this statement. Sorry for my dog.
Uh, thank you very much for your comments. Uh, and uh, we appreciate you being here. Uh, Ms. Scheck, are there additional hands raised?
I don't see another hands raised at this time, Mayor.
Okay, I will uh, uh, ask if there's anyone on the telephone or anyone uh, addition else in the public who would like to speak on this item. I'd be happy to uh, to have you speak now. Uh, please uh, speak up, and I will recognize you. Any other, any other members of the public who would like to speak? I don't hear any members of the public who would like to speak at this time, uh, so I'm going to close the public. going to close the public comment portion on this item and open this up to questions or comments from council. Please raise your hand. Ms. Weaver.
I just want to thank the three counselors and all of the public input that was involved with this. I just think this is fantastic and just want to thank Ms. Nosler Beck and Ms. Hulteen and Ms. Dozeman for their time and and for all of the people who all of the the unnamed people that have been involved with the listings sessions and all of these different things. So thank you all, and I'm definitely supportive of this.
Thank you, Ms. Weaver. Additional comments, questions from staff or from council? Ms. Hoppy? And then Ms. Hulteen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to also say thank you to Councilwomen Hulteen, Nosler Beck, and Dozeman for going out there and having the hard conversations and looking hard to find people to be a part of this collaboration and listening to their voices and being able to get it put onto one piece of paper is is a feat, and it's an amazing work. And so thank you very much for all of your work and bringing this to us so that we can support it.
Thank you, Ms. Hoppy. We'll go to Ms. Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I said this once, and I'll just say it again. I'm so grateful for all the community members who we've been able to work through. I learned a lot in the last week. I learned something new, I feel like every fifteen minutes for a week straight, and it's because I don't I have my own perspective, and there's a lot of different perspectives in our community. And when Ms. Ms. Dozeman and I hosted the community listening session a week ago, for the first time that I know, we had three languages spoken at a community engagement event, and it was really powerful to hear voices we don't normally hear from. So I want to share something that I've read before at council as as a resident. But when I I was working in real estate when I moved to Wheat Ridge, and when I put my house under contract, and I was reading through the one hundred thousand documents you get from your title company, and I looked at the the plat for my neighborhood, and I bought my house from the the family that actually built the house, and I think that's just a really wonderful, unique gift that a lot of us have in Wheat Ridge. But when I was reading the plat, on the plat were some covenants that were recorded in March of nineteen forty-six. And I'm just going to read to you. Covenant D read, only persons of Caucasian race shall use or occupy any building on any lot. This covenant shall not prevent use or occupy by domestic servants of a different race domiciled with or in employ of a white owner or tenant. And that was one of my first introductions to Wheat Ridge, other than using the fabulous rec center and the trails. And and I've remembered that for the eight years that I've lived here. And of course, we've come a long way, but I think sometimes moments in time like this remind us that some of the things that we experience in our day-to-day lives, you know, weren't like rooted in the intentions that we feel like we have right now. So I've heard from a lot of people feeling conflicted between feeling good and being a good person and and really feeling like, oh, I'm not a racist. And and I think this is a point in time where you can be a good person and like really examine what does racism mean for you and your community. And I hope we can all step into that uncomfortable space so that we can learn and grow as much as I have things to our community members in the last week. And I just I wanted to close with, as I've been told, I have a lot of work to do, and and I'm grateful for people who are willing to tell me that, and I'm ready, I'm ready to do the work. So I just want to thank everyone and thank thank you, co-counselors and and community members.
Thank you, Ms. Hulteen. Additional comments from council? Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the father of two biracial children and the husband to a person of color, I don't think anybody here would disagree that we should hate racism. We should do whatever we can to end racism. My concern here with this document is quite numerous such one going to go through this. First of all, the title of the document asks us to condemn hate, which is sort of difficult to wrap your head around because the word hate means feel intense or passionate dislike for. And then the word condemn means express complete disapproval of. So we're hating hate, which doesn't make sense to me. And I think that our use of Mr. George Floyd's name in this document and then sort of dilute it into other areas is somewhat of a disservice to his legacy. So I would like us to try to do what we can to rework this, and I can go through with the wherés individually. Because in my mind, as we look at this and we consider that Black Lives Matters, we need to know that we are laserly focused on that particular issue and not dilute that focus on a variety of other issues that have been presented in this particular document. So as it relates to the title of the document, I'd like us to go back to what is the original title, which is a resolution condemning racism. It's not that we don't condemn hate, but it's you're basically saying the same thing twice. So I would like to add that, and I can provide a list of these changes as well. In the first whereas clause, we indicate that we are deeply saddened by the unnecessary deaths of black Americans. I'd be curious as to what are the necessary deaths. I don't think there are any. And then we indicate that what we mentioned, Mr. George Floyd and the death, I think we can strike the word death and insert the word killing. In the second whereas clause, I think the the word affirms needs to say reaffirms because I believe the city of Wheat Ridge has affirmed and will continue to affirm the lives of black people matter. And I would like that second whereas clause to have a period after the word matter and strike the remaining segment of that whereas clause. The third whereas clause, we have rightfully edited the number of years as four hundred and one. You can do the math on the hundred and fifty-five. I think it's hundred and fifty-seven, but a hundred and fifty-five sounds right. That's fine. I do have a problem with the indication that where it indicates prejudices are perpetrated daily against black people in our country and our own community. I don't believe that's a factual statement that within the city of Wheat Ridge that we've had violent acts or prejudices perpetrated to date, Monday, June twenty-second. And so I'm fine with calling this out and saying that there are violent acts and prejudices that are perpetrated against black people in our community, but to suggest that it's happening on a daily basis is an inaccurate statement and an overly broad stereotype of the situation. The let's see, this is the one, two, three. The fourth whereas clause, I think we can leave that whereas clause simply as whereas racism and hate have no place in our series, period. Because the next whereas clause, I think, covers the same part as is that second paragraph. So I would leave that next whereas clause pretty much the same. The whereas clause that talks about the Wheat Ridge Police Department as a nationally accredited agency and has embraced the six pillars of policing from President Obama's Task Force on Twenty-First Century Policing, including, I would strike the words procedural justice and insert what is the actual term, which is building trust and legitimacy. And that's the that's the first pillar of those six pillars. And then on the next whereas clause, under the previous edition, not the most recent edition that Ms. Hulteen read into the record, I would like to insert the phrase, city of Wheat Ridge, its mayor, city council, city manager, chief of police, and the entire Wheat Ridge Police Department, because we don't want us to unfairly put it on the back of our police officers to do all this work. We as the the entire city government need to do what we can to move this ball forward. So and then the the last whereas clause, I would remove the phrase, an important step, and insert the phrase, a small step, because as much as we want to pat ourselves on the back for passing a resolution, resolution does absolutely nothing to truly end systemic racism. And what we need is action, and I agree with Mrs. Morgan Richards that we need to take action within the city, but passing resolutions and patting ourselves on the back that we're doing this just doesn't ring true to me. So those are my changes, and I can forward those on if anybody would like to consider those changes.
Thank you very much. Additional discussion from council on this resolution. Ms. Dozeman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to thank Councilmember Hulteen and Councilmember Nosler Beck for their work on this issue. It's really hard to step into this space without having the lived experiences of people of color. So it's really been a situation where we've had to listen, and we've had to learn, and we've had really to examine ourselves and our lives and our privileges that that the people of color do not believe that they are awarded in in our society. And I've really appreciated the stories that have been shared in our community, especially the ones that were allowed allowed to be shared in another language at Councilmember Hulteen and and my listening session this moment in time, because I think it's it's we have this marginalized population, and we've experienced this a lot in our communities where, especially when it becomes also a socioeconomic class issue, where marginalized voices don't participate, whether they don't trust the government, they don't believe that they are listened to, they don't believe that they can actually make a change. And so we've seen a lot of our Title I schools targeted for closure, and we have a large Title I population that are on free and reduced lunch in our community. You know, it's been a struggle for for those community members to have access to those resources, and I think that the pandemic has heightened our awareness at the inequities that that exist in in our society and in our institutions. And I really want to thank Morgan Richards for putting together this equity group that has been meeting on a regular basis. I know Councilmember Nosler Beck has attended several times. I've been able to make it out there once, and I really appreciate these voices gathering and having the courage to let us know what it is that they experience on a regular basis in our community that we may not see. And to Mr. Urban's points, as far as the semantics of of the resolution, I would agree that this is a small step, that that this is just a statement, and a statement without action behind it isn't really something or anything. So I think it's important for us to take a stand against racism and for us to be aware that we have a lot of work to do in the future. And so I'm not sure why these changes weren't sent and submitted at an earlier time, or if you just wanted to discuss it this evening. As far as the four hundred and one years and the hundred and fifty-five years since the abolition, it is a hundred and fifty-five years since the Thirteenth Amendment was passed in eighteen sixty-five, but if we are going based off of the Emancipation Proclamation, which was supposed to take place in January of eighteen sixty-three, then we are talking about a hundred and fifty-seven years. So I think that this is important work, and Council Councilor Nosler Beck, Hulteen, and I, and as well as other council members have discussed what actions to take from here forward, and we've received a lot of support in that. And so I just want to thank not only the council members, but the community members that have had the courage to 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 say, okay, this is an issue, and we want to see our leaders take action. And I also want to thank city staff, not not only on this issue, but also in addressing the coronavirus. You have kept us very well informed. You follow through. You guys have been fantastic, and I have seen a lot of positive comments from the community members and business owners saying that, like, they trust our local government because of how accessible, transparent, effective, and efficient you have been. So I just wanted to thank everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Dozeman. Ms. Nosler Beck?
Thanks, Mayor. Just a couple of things. I think it's important, and I kind of said this before too, but to understand that the reason we put together this resolution for tonight was that we wanted to do the work, and this is this is meant to set the stage. And I don't want to let us get stuck on making this perfect so that we can't do the work that needs to get done. And we we have a lot of really great ideas. As Morgan said in her statement, we have some great ideas coming through the community on what we can do. I also we also want to hear from city staff and from Chief Murtha on this. And, you know, I I think it's it's more important for us to move forward on the overarching goal. I think we all know what we're trying to accomplish with this resolution and and push this forward tonight so that we can get to the get to the real the real meat here and what we're trying to accomplish. So just appreciate everybody's consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I I for me, I can support this as as it is because I know that a lot of citizens' voices are in this. Like Ms. Hulteen had said while she read it in her voice, it was the voice of many people that that brought it together. If we don't, if we're unable to come to a place tonight where we can support this and it turns into a wordsmithing marathon, then we'll be three more weeks down the road. And so I I understand that there is there is some urgency to to try to get this out tonight. And so I'll support it as it is. And and if Councilmember Urban really doesn't like the title, I'll support taking the and hate off of the title, but as far as the rest of it goes, I can support it the way it is. So I just hope that we can come to a place where we can go ahead and pass this tonight so that we don't end up being further further down the road.
Thank you. Additional discussion? Council? Mr. Urban?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. So are we working off of the read-in record that Ms. Hulteen provided at the beginning of her presentation, or are we working on the one that's presented in the packet?
Well, we don't have a motion on the floor. So Ms. Hulteen, there's one in the packet, the version that was read by Ms. Hulteen is somewhat different than that, but we don't we don't have a motion on the floor. So I suppose it's available to to do what with as we as we desire.
So I guess I would ask Ms. Hulteen to read that the one that she wants into the record as a motion, and then I would like to present several amendments to that.
Is there is there additional discussion before we go to a motion? Well, seeing none, I will ask Ms. Hulteen to provide us a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Resolution Number thirty-five twenty, a resolution condemning racism and hate as revised and read into the record tonight.
Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
It's a second by Ms. Nosler Beck. Is there discussion on the motion? Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would move to change the title of the resolution, a resolution condemning racism, period, and removing the words and hate.
Is there a second on the amendment?
I will second that.
There's a motion and a second on an amendment to delete the words and hate from the title. Is there discussion on the amendment? All right, let us let us go to a vote on the amendment. If you are in favor of the amendment to delete the words and hate in the title, please raise your hand, and will the clerk please hold the council?
Mr. Mayor, four people have voted in favor of the motion.
All those opposed to the motion, same sign.
Please raise your hand. Four members have voted against the motion. Would you care to break the tie, Mr. Mayor?
Well, I'm not crazy. Well, I I'm I'm not crazy to do that, but I will vote against the motion. Mr. Mayor, the motion to amend has failed five to four. Okay, um is there additional discussion on the on the motion, on the main motion? Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would uh move to strike the word unnecessary from the first whereas clause in the second to last line.
Is there a second on that amendment? There is a motion and a second to strike the word uh unnecessary unnecessary in the third line. Is there discussion on the amendment? Uh Ms. Uh Dozeman.
Uh just a question to Councilmember Urban. Are so just a s- a strike of it or would you to replace it?
No, just strike it.
Is there further discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, we will vote. All those in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand and will the clerk please poll the council? I see four I votes, Mr. Mayor. How many? All right, all those opposed, same sign? Somebody has not voted.
That was me. I would like to uh I'm okay with it being stricken. I had to read it again, sorry.
Mr. Mayor, the motion has now passed five to three. Okay, thank you so much. We are now back to the main to discussion on the main motion. Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the second whereas clause, uh after the phrase black people matter. I would insert a period and strike the remaining uh section of the whereas clause. Uh up until the word and at the very end.
Okay, so um. Is there a second on the amendment? This is to um put a put a period after um. Matter and uh strike everything before the and in the last sentence. Is there a second on the amendment? I don't see a second on the amendment, so that would that amendment would fail for lack of a second. Just a further discussion on the motion. Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um. Let's see here. In the fourth whereas clause, uh says racism and hate have no place in our ci- in our city. Uh I would leave that sentence, but remove the next one, which is which states there is much work to be done to stop. Pervasive, longstanding devastating racial injustices in our community.
Is there a second to the amendment?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second uh discussion on the amendment. Seeing none, we will go to the vote on the amendment. All those in favor uh signify by raising your hand. All opposed? Mr. Mayor, the amendment has failed five to three. Okay, thank you. Uh for the discussion on the main motion, Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh let me go back uh one whereas clause to the third whereas clause. Uh where we say violent acts and prejudices are perpetrated daily. I would remove the word daily.
Is there a second on the amendment?
Second.
There's a a motion and a second on the amendment to strike the word daily and the third whereas is their discussion on the motion. Mr. Urban.
Um but my reason for asking for this to be removed is as a city council, we're passing a resolution and resolution should. Do our best to contain facts and it would concern me greatly to learn we have violent acts occurring daily in our community. I don't disagree that we do have racism within our community and that does happen on a on a more frequent basis than any of us would like. But to indicate that we have daily acts of violence happening in our community is a false statement.
Additional discussion on the amendment. Ms. Uh Holte.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um in working on that particular language, uh that had been put in by members of our community. Who believe that they are experiencing that. Um it's not necessarily just violent acts, but it does also include prejudices. And so um with a community of thirty-one thousand people and a lot of things happening daily in our community. Um we we were informed by our community as we worked on this that that was something that they felt. Um reflected their experiences. So you know, do we have hard data that we pulled up? Um no, we don't. But we did hear from our community that they felt that reflected um their experience. Thank you.
Uh Ms. Uh Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When you refer speaking to your community, how many people are those out of thirty-one thousand?
Uh so we were working with a a group of, I think, uh. Ms. Richards mentioned that there are about thirty-five people that are informing her group. Um so again, we didn't talk to the whole community. Um but it was vetted and reviewed and that language was was put forward by their group um that they felt that that does reflect their community. And so um I don't feel like I'm in a position to question that that is what they share with me.
It just seems to me like that's a generalization. So. I mean, everybody has things that go on with them every day. They have good days, bad days, kind of thing like that. But this is like a. Broad statement that it is happening every day and I. Um I don't think it happens every day myself. I've been here a long time too. I walk this around the streets and things like that. I don't know what happens to everybody in every neighborhood, but. Um it just seems like a generalization. So I I would like to see that taken off too daily because I've even had. Kids in schools and things like that that I don't get all that from. The kids and stuff, so. Thank you.
Uh Ms. Weaver.
Sorry about that. Um I I I think daily is totally acceptable and and I. I could only speak as a woman uh but when I go out um. I daily think about violence uh against me and if I'm safe and I can't imagine. The added uh safety factor of all of the other things we're discussing. And so. I really feel like if our community is saying it's happening on a daily basis, I know that that I don't, you know, wh- whereas I don't have. Violence perpetrated against me, do I think about it every time I leave by myself? Thanks.
Thank you. Additional discussion on the amendment. Seeing none, uh will the clerk please poll the council on the amendment? All those in favor, raise your hand. Opposed? Mr. Mayor, the amendment has failed six to two. Thank you. Um additional discussion on the main motion, Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh let's see here. In the fifth whereas clause where it says we strive to be a community where all mothers, fathers and caregivers can raise their children to feel safe. And where all people can feel safe, I would put a period there and strike the remaining segment of the uh whereas clause. My reason for that is that uh we want to be an inclusive community and we should leave it at that and remain. Laser focused on being a community where children can feel safe and where all people can feel safe. I don't feel it's necessary for us to delineate the ways in which that can happen because it can happen in a variety of different ways. And it doesn't extend to simply the ones that are listed there. So I would strike the remaining segment of that whereas.
Uh there's some uh an amended amendment on the table. Is there a second to the amendment?
Second.
Uh okay, we have a second by Ms. Hutchinson. Uh is there a discussion on the amendment? Ms. Holte.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um again, I can speak to that language specifically was provided to us by a a woman who works with. Uh advocacy group who advocates on behalf of Spanish-speaking families. And she actually called into our listening session and then I arranged for a translator. Uh once we started working on this um to get her perspective and she very specifically uh. As part of her family advocacy is very concerned that the color of the skin of her children and that the fact that. There are non-English speaking few people in her family makes them less safe. So again, this was language that was put forward by. People in our community who are experiencing this. Thank you.
Additional discussion on the amendment. Okay, um we will take a vote on the amendment. All those in favor uh signify by raising your hand and the clerk will poll the council. Opposed? Mr. Mayor, the amendment has failed by a vote of two to six. Thank you. A discussion on the main motion. Mr. Urban.
Um I would remove in the uh, let's see, that's. In the seventh whereas clause, the third line of the whereas clause indicates the phrase procedural justice. And I would replace that with uh building trust and legitimacy, which is the actual pillar within that uh. Task force uh outline of the six pillars.
Second. We have a motion and a second uh by Mr. Stites. Discussion on the amendment. Uh Ms. Holte.
Uh I don't, I have not looked to verify that, but Mr. Urban, assuming that. That is something that you've verified and this is moved through as a typo. Um that information was provided to me by uh Mr. Goff. So if in fact that is the correct thing, then I would support this.
I did it, it Mr. Urban is correct.
Okay, then I I will be supporting that.
Okay, additional discussion on the amendment. All right, seeing none, let us vote on the amendment. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously. The amendment is. Okay, um we're back to a discussion on the main main motion. Um, Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the eighth whereas clause, uh there's a strike of the in Ms. Holte's presented. Motion, there was a a strike of to understand the steps the police department has taken. A must take to provide effective safety. Um I'd like to understand better why that was taken out and I guess my concern on that is. Wanting to recognize the steps that they have taken and will continue to take to provide effective public safety.
Uh Ms. Holte, would you like to address that?
Sure. Again, um that edit that has come through uh was a very, very strong. Advocacy piece that we heard from the Wheat Ridge for Equity Group. Um they really felt that. Uh in that particular whereas that again, we're we're looking at um what we want the whole of Wheat Ridge to do. And really taking a look at what we need to be doing moving forward. So um that was, I would say, one of the strongest. Uh advocacy pieces that they came forward with um that they felt needed to reflect what they're looking for. Um and I I support it.
Ms. Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I I would just like to say that um. There's work to be done and not only in just in our police department and and while our police department has taken several steps. And and we're in the process of taking those steps prior to um all of this happening. I think that it's appropriate to strike the police department out of there because it really leads to say. As a community as a whole and it doesn't pigeonhole just the police department as someone who needs to be working alongside community leaders and residents. So um I support it remaining stricken.
Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not necessarily looking to pigeonhole this as work to only be done by the police department. What I'm looking to do is to highlight the work that they have already done and as we've gone through this entire process, we have. Uh been given a mountain of data and evidence and testimony by our police officers, by our police department as. To how progressive and how, you know, forward-thinking they have been in in throughout this entire uh sort of. Unveiling of of these different reforms that have been requested and time and time again, we've been told and shown in many different ways that our police department is. Light years ahead of other police departments and that uh that last whereas clause just simply doesn't elucidate the. The steps and the ways in which our police department has shown uh to be light years ahead of all of the other departments in our surrounding communities. So. Uh that's my reason for wanting to make sure we keep that in there, not to say it's their work alone, but to show that they are doing uh great work.
Ms. Holte.
Thank you. I just want to share that um having had the conversations with with the community members. Um this particular point, I'm concerned that we would lose alignment with our advocacy group on this particular issue. And um I'm afraid that if if we come out of alignment with them, um we did not, they. This resolution was not written by them. They provided a lot of stuff that we um didn't accept and and put in here. But this was the one thing that they felt incredibly strongly about because. Um I mean, I I don't want to speak necessarily for them. I think Ms. Richards would do a much more eloquent job of it, but. Um I would say comprehensively, the input from their group was that um we need to be talking about. The work that needs to be done moving forward as well as really not focusing on the the police department specifically, but the city as a whole. So um my my concern is that uh this particular issue, if it changes. Um we we may lose some of that support and I think um to lose that support would um not allow us to move forward with the. Things we heard from them tonight and the intent of this particular resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Dozeman.
I I just wanted to piggyback on that as far as I think that we have given the police a a wonderful platform of highlighting. Um the what policies and practices they have put in place um and are well ahead of. Where what the state is is calling for. Um and so I, you know, they they've received their kudos and and not to say that we don't have an excellent. Uh police department, but I think the the public input on this um would, I think, should outweigh. Putting that clause back in and I think I think if we want to highlight the police department in other ways and and bring them along. Uh I I'm I'm fine with that, but I I don't think that it needs to be highlighted here.
Uh Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would move to add to that eighth whereas clause, uh the city of Wheat Ridge. Uh in particular, our Wheat Ridge Police Department. And then go on to pledges to work alongside our community leaders and residents.
So that was to incorporate the words, the uh the Wheat Ridge Police Department in the first line?
The city of Wheat Ridge, uh in particular, the Wheat Ridge Police Department. So the words in particular, the Wheat Ridge Police Department.
Okay, is there a second to the amendment? Uh Ms. Dozeman, is that a second?
No, I'm that wasn't a second since there isn't one. I'll refrain from commenting further.
Okay, uh let let me see if we do get a second. Is there a second to Mr. Urban's amendment? Seeing none, the amendment fails. Additional discussion on the main motion. Is there any more discussion on the on the main motion? Is there any more discussion on the, on the main motion? Um we have taken a couple of amendments, I believe. I'm not quite sure. I don't have a tally on them, but uh, I'm sure someone else does. Is there more? Is there additional discussion on this item before we go to a vote? Okay, seeing none, will all those in favor of the amended motion, please raise your hand and will the clerk please poll the council?
Mister Mayor, the motion has passed by a vote of six to two.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that discussion. We will now move to uh agenda item number six. Uh, Mister Urban, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Resolution thirty-six dash twenty twenty, a resolution of the Wheat Ridge City Council extending their request for the wearing of face coverings in all Wheat Ridge businesses. City Council approved resolution June one, uh, twenty twenty requesting customers of all Wheat Ridge businesses to wear face coverings. The request expires midnight tonight, June twenty-second. This resolution will provide an extension of that request through July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty.
Uh, thank you, Mister Goff. Do we have a staff presentation or any re- uh remarks on this item?
No, we don't have anything tonight.
Okay, so this is to extend this mask order out. Is there um um, is there discussion on this item before we go to a motion? Uh, seeing none, Mister Urban, may I have a motion on this item?
Yeah, if I could find it. All right. I move to approve resolution thirty-six dash twenty twenty, a resolution of the Wheat Ridge City Council extending their request for the wearing of face coverings in all Wheat Ridge businesses through July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty.
Second.
There's a motion and a second by Ms. Hutchinson. Is there discussion on the motion? Mister Stites.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I'd like to amend the motion, um, replacing the word request with the word recommend, uh, so it matches what the CDC and Jeffco Public Health are both uh putting out there.
Is there a second for the amendment from Mister Stites?
I'll second that.
Um, who was the, there was somebody before Mister Urban who got the second, Miss Weaver?
No, no, no. Could you repeat the amendment? I, for whatever reason, I, it was very soft and I didn't hear it.
Okay, so uh, the, the second, Miss Weaver's
That's foul.
Oh, that was foul? Okay, so we have a, we have a uh, an, an amendment and um a second and Mister Stites, would you please restate your, your amendment?
Yes, Mister Mayor. Um, I amended uh the word request with, with the word recommend so that it matches um the CDC and the Jeffco Public Health orders.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have an, an amendment to change the word um, request to recommend. Uh, is there discussion on the amendment? Miss uh, Hoppy?
Um, I, i- if we were changing this back to um a required order, um, then I think it would be worth all the time and staff time to go and change out all of the signage again and to contact all of the businesses again. But um, at this point, they have their signage up, but they've received some staff. Um, you know, they've had their um they've, you know, had their, the staff gets out and talks to everybody. And so I think for uh just this one word that kind of means mostly the same, um, it's sort of splitting hairs. So I, I won't be voting on this amendment only because I, I feel like it could potentially be a, a, a a kind of a time waste for staff.
Additional discussion on the amendment. We will go to a vote on the amendment. Uh, uh, all those in favor of the amendment, uh, please raise your hand and will the clerk please poll the council?
I see four votes aye.
All those opposed, uh, please raise your hand.
And I see four votes nay. Mister Mayor, would you like to predict the tie?
I will vote nay.
The amendment has failed five to four.
Uh, so we are on the main motion. Is there discussion on the main motion? Ms. Dozeman.
So along the same lines as far as signage goes, I've still seen a lot of the signage that first came out uh with Wheat Ridge requiring masks. So I think the messaging is confusing either way. Um, and I will not be supporting uh extending this. I think that it should be on the onus of the business is to um enact and, and impose that on their, their customers and you know, customers can choose whether they want to um go to, go to those and frequent those businesses, whether they require masks or not. Um, there's a lot of delivery, uh, pickup, curbside pickup, um, that, you know, it, it prevents further face-to-face interactions. And so I think there are a lot of ways around requiring this and I think that um, I think it's past its, its time.
Thank you. Further discussion on the motion. Seeing no further discussion, we will go to a vote. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. Will the clerk please poll the council?
Nay. Anybody voting nay? Mister Mayor, the motion has passed five to three.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Uh, that concludes our uh our agenda items. So let's find out where we are in the order of business and we will go from there. We are at um city managers matters, Mister Goff.
You know, I think I will punt this evening. You all worked very hard. It's late and um, I don't have anything that can't wait, so.
Thank you so much. Uh, we will go to city attorneys matters, Mister Dahl.
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, we will go to elected officials matters and we will uh start with our clerk, Mister Kirkpatrick.
Mister Mayor, I have nothing new to report to council this evening.
Thank you so much. I don't see treasurer Mister Miller, but if he is here, I would entertain uh his comments. Okay, I don't see Mister Miller. Uh, Ms. Nosler Beck.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, for what we heard from members of the community and from city council tonight um, with the passage of the resolution. Um, to um condemn racism and hate, I think that um it's important that we have some action items to back up um what we've passed. And so I would like to add a study session to the schedule, um, hopefully for this summer to have a facilitator work with council um, and start, start the work on potentially standing up a Wheat Ridge Race and Equity Task Force. Um and um ideally, I think the Wheat Ridge Race and Equity Task Force should be probably community-led and, and cities-supported. Um, and hopefully um, through that session, uh, we'll have more guidance on um, what they'll do, but um I think that uh, from the feedback that we've received, uh, you know, we could, we could they could potentially be charged with reviewing um policies and making policy recommendations to promote equity throughout the city. Um, and I also think that prior to or even during that study session, um, the council and also city staff, um per, I think it would be good if they could participate in a facilitated implicit bias and race equity training. Um, so I'd like to propose that um study session.
Ms. Dozeman?
I would like to support council member Nosler Beck in that request.
Okay, um, Ms. Hoppy, is that something that we would be able to um to get on our study session agenda?
Yes, Councilwoman Nosler Beck and uh Councilwoman Dozeman have already um sent an email with that request and um, have given a lot of backup data for um, for that to be able to um move forward. So it will be added to the list. And um, we will start to move forward on it and then I'll let you know when it gets scheduled.
Thank you so much. Uh, thank you, Ms. Uh, Nosler Beck.
Um, thanks, Mayor. And just one other thing, um, I wanted to thank all of our artists and local works who have been um doing the chalk art uh at local businesses. They are so awesome and some of them are interactive. Um, it has been a really fun, now that, you know, more businesses have opened up, it's been really fun, especially with my kiddos. Um, taking them there and it's inspired them to, to do some chalk art at our house too. So thank you so much.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Nosler Beck. Um, Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Um, I've been asked by Jefferson County uh Treasurer Jared DeTulio to please announce that um the treasurer's office is waiving late interest uh through July thirty-first and that if any taxpayers still need to make their property tax payments, uh, they can make them in multiple payments and the late interest will be waived through, like I said, July thirty-first. Um, and then with that, uh, I think I've said everything that I've needed to say. I just wanted to extend another thanks to everyone um in how they've handled the, the pandemic, the racism and, and having these conversations. So, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Dozeman. Um, Mister Stites.
Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor. Because it was brought up tonight during public comment and it's, I've seen it uh quite a bit for the last few weeks, um fireworks, I know they're illegal. Um, is there anything we can do more to help out our neighbors um as far as uh maybe enforcing that or uh, anything like that?
Mister Goff, uh, do you want to, do you want to take a, take a stab at that? I haven't, I haven't heard him going off outside my window, but that's a little unusual.
Well, I just heard him several times during this meeting and so I texted the police chief. I said, go get him. So that he's, he's off the call and, and um, I think he's heard it, he heard it loud and clear tonight. So we'll see what we can do.
Mister Murtha, Chief Murtha's on our call and I'm sure he is aware of this and will, will take uh that's a tough issue to, to police, but I'm sure we will, we will give it our best efforts. Thank you so much. Anything additional?
No, thank you for everybody's hard work and
Thank you, Mister Stites for bringing that up. Uh, Ms. Weaver.
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Miss Hulteen.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Um, I just want to give a shout out uh to District Two resident. Um, her name is Sherry Keegan. I hope I got her name right. And uh, starting on the fourth of July, uh, Ms. Keegan is going to be walking from the Jefferson County Courthouse in Birmingham, Alab- Alabama. Um, and I believe she is walking north. I don't have her exact route. Oh, she's actually going all the way to Canada. Um, and she is doing this as an inspiration around civil rights and trying to bring attention to that in our community. So I just wanted to give her a shout out for that amazing adventure and I hope she will uh, be sharing her stories along the way because um, I know I'll be following her on Facebook and um, won't be actually walking with her, but um, we'll be with her in spirit. And then I just had a question about um recently, uh, I was driving by and saw that the town center park has been fenced off. And I was just wondering if uh, there's an update on, on what the status is of that and if maybe I missed something, but um it kind of caught me off guard. I'm just curious what's going on.
Yeah, we, we fenced it off because we were having issues um honestly with uh that be- becoming a area for folks to congregate and sleep and um, we felt it was becoming an issue with COVID and a potential spread of COVID. So um that, that park has had, has been an issue for quite some time. Um, and we've actually been uh discussing it with the business owners on either side of it and they both have asked us that we um do something about it. Um, and so for now, we fenced it off until um, until we can um find a better solution.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate concern about our community's health.
Uh, thank you, Miss Hulteen. Uh, Mister Urban.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Uh, as an update to the Business Stabilization Program, last week, we provided the final uh assessment of the hundred and three applicants who had applied under the second round. And uh, I believe at this point, uh, staff has notified all of those applicants relative to their award amount. And we are now finished with round two. Uh, Mister Jared Tulio had mentioned at the beginning of this call uh, that an applicant had submitted an application. City staff has stated that that application was not received. Uh, we have not heard back from the applicant relative to when and where or how they uh did submit their application. So at this point, all the applicants who have uh requested assistance from the city have been responded to either with an award or with a denial based on the criteria that was set in the uh task force.
Uh, thank you, Mister Urban. Uh, we'll go to a Ms. Hutchinson.
Nothing tonight, Mister Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Ms. Hoppy.
I thank you, Mister Mayor. Just one thing I wanted to uh bring up because we were talking about public notice, policy and procedures for land use cases. Councilmember Stites and I have added that onto the um study session uh futures list, which is a review of public notice and policy procedures for land use and it's currently scheduled for July twentieth. So that will be um, that will be coming up soon, just so everybody knows.
Thank you very much. That brings us almost to the end of our meeting. Uh, I would like to um uh, thank all of the counselors uh and, and staff for being here tonight to join us on this meeting. I would like to thank uh Commissioner Namiach for uh, for being here and his work with the Parks and Recreation and we we uh appreciate the parks in our, in our community. Uh, I want to thank all the citizens who joined us tonight. We try to make these meetings open and transparent. It uh, it can be challenging on a Zoom format, but uh, you know, I, I uh appreciate the efforts that uh the public is making to stay informed on these issues and for joining us, the efforts of our staff to uh do everything they can to facilitate uh in council uh opportunities and opportunities on Zoom. I want to make a special thank you to the counselors and the citizens who were instrumental in bringing the uh resolution on, on uh racism and hate in our community. This is a very challenging time. I think we uh, I think we have a great opportunity. I think this is a a sea change moment in our lives and I hope that we are able to uh open our eyes and more importantly, open our hearts to the people in our community and make everyone welcome. Uh, we will know, know peace until we know justice in our communities. So uh, and I want to uh also thank Mister Urban and the members of the uh, of his committee, the Business Stabilization Program. Uh, this, the support that uh our uh city, our, our city's been able to, to uh give to our business community and to our citizens. Um, the, the uh, the COVID crisis and, and emergency uh in our, in our community is, is real. Um, we, we've done a great job in, in staying safe and, and washing our hands and uh, you know, uh, wearing masks and, and distancing. Uh, we've been very successful in our community and I really encourage everyone to take that to heart and to try to do everything they can to keep themselves and their families and their other members of the community safe. With that, uh, I appreciate a very productive meeting. I want to thank you all and without any further business, we will stand adjourned. Good night.